All right, we're ready to go.
Okay, well, it is six o'clock and we call this Lacey City Work Session to order on November tenth. We have an agenda in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing them, all unfair questions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you want to post? And that motion now carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on our agenda is the new police station, the design budget review.
This one?
I swear.
So Bill gonna begin?
No. Yes, Bill, Bill who is joining us virtually will start the presentation.
Great.
Am I sharing my screen yet?
I know. On Zoom?
There we go.
Well, hello, everyone. Hopefully you can all hear me. Okay.
Yes.
Well, we're just very grateful to be able to be here to present to you to tonight as part of the council work session. And as my my partner there indicated, my name is Bill Valdez. I'm a partner at KMB Architects and I'm acting as the principal in charge of the design team. And so with that, why don't we kind of get started and go to the next page, which kind of outlines really everybody that's been really part of this. Present or part of the design process to date. So, you know, obviously, we've been working hand in hand with city Lacey as well as the Lacey Police Department. And as I indicated, came the architects, where the the prime architectural design and project management firm for this project. And I don't know, has everybody already made introductions so far? Should we go around the room and kind of make introductions of the remaining folks that are in the room?
Yeah, let's do that real quick.
Actually, you want to start? Well, I was actually gonna let Ruben start. Ruben, who's sitting back here, is also with KMB, a member of the design team. And Bill and Ruben and I have all been working on this project since it first started several years ago as a programming and space needs effort. And so that continuity with the team has been really beneficial to the project. I'm Brian Berryhill. I'm I'm with this other weird name, Shepard. We do law enforcement work really west of the Mississippi and we're a firm out of Denver, Colorado. This is our specialty. We've been doing this. Now the firm has been doing this. It'll be forty years next year. And so we have a, we have a history and catalog of work doing these things specifically.
Ruben, yes, with KMB Architects and projects. Like if you can be round the same. That we did projects at the beginning.
Now back to you, Bill.
Actually, it wouldn't just be Ashley then John.
Sure.
I'm Ashley Smith. I'm the city's designing construction manager. Started this project with the police department, space needs analysis, and now heading it over to John.
John's with Capital Project Engineer, recently joined City of Lacey here and part of Ashley's team running this project and working with your architects.
Well, thank you very much. I, you know, obviously, there's other team members as part of our overall design team. Really key components have been Swift Company, who's focused on landscape architecture as well as site design. Especially with the site that selected and really the tree management, management and mitigation process there. And then J and B Consulting Group, who's been our cost estimator, who we've been working with to prepare the cost estimates that we'll be showing a little bit later in the presentation, so. We can move on to the next slide. Um, sorry, as Brian indicated, we've been working on this project for a little over three years. And as part of that, we started with the pre-design process and we just wanted to kind of show you. You know, a couple of graphics to kind of illustrate exactly what we did as part of the pre-design. So again, the image that here on the left is really just the existing site. So we analyzed and really studied the site. Really kind of looked at access, looked at parking, looked at square footage availability and how the site could be possibly expanded. Or possibly looking at other sites, which ultimately on the image on the right was the preferred site, which is adjacent immediately to the north. And really started looking at how that site could be developed to be able to accommodate the needs. And then really, that's what the pre-design was all about, was establishing what the need is, which the need is really driven by the square footage to be able to accommodate the staffing. And the operations within the building, really looking at where ultimately it would be located. And then really how that that facility would be implemented onto whatever the site that that ends up being selected on. So I just wanted to be able to kind of use this really quickly as a way to kind of bring you up on the process that ultimately occurred. As part of the pre-design process. So why don't we go to the next slide, which really starts to answer some of those questions about why did we knew need a new facility here in Lacey? And really, this was the list that ultimately was the key drivers behind, behind the why. And then just kind of hit on a few of them, you know, obviously officer safety and staff safety is is critical for a a public safety facility. And really looking at the existing facility, there is definitely some deficiencies that need to get remedied. There's no barriers really between the civil employees within the records department and where suspects would actually be within the facility during an investigation. There's a lot of spaces that were really undersized and there was really no future growth. And I'll hit on the next slide, which real, real, we'll talk a lot more about what that growth really is and 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 the rationale behind it as well. Their law enforcement facilities have become so specialized. As technology has increased and we really had a lack of specialized spaces within the existing facility. Also, you know, security and privacy of victims was not really ideal within the existing facility and for noise transmission and everything else. And we there. I wanted to be able to rectify that in a new facility. There was really some lack of space for community engagement and with community oriented policing practices now, really having that close interaction and connection to the community is really key. In developing that relationship with the community. As we, you kind of saw in the previous slide about the the site being on a shared site with the the library as well as the city hall. Parking was definitely at a premium. And so even though the the building square footage could not accommodate all the staff and the needs of the staff within the the building, the site and the site parking was also trailing behind and really limiting the amount of spaces that were needed for both the personal vehicles for the law enforcement department as well as secured, secured parking for the law enforcement vehicles as well. Gender inequity, this was really is focused really on the the male and the female officers. We really don't have a lot of great spaces and and equal spaces for the female officers within the department and really wanting to try to rectify that as part of a new facility. And then the building is not one hundred percent compliant with regards to ADA accessibility. So with the second story, spaces and conference rooms within the existing facility is not accessible by an elevator, only by stair. So as well as several other spaces like bathrooms that are not, do not current currently meet the current ADA accessibility code. And so that's another reason why a new facility is really needed. So why don't we go on to the next slide? And this really, like I said, really starts to illustrate the rationale behind really what the need is. Your existing facility, which was built in nineteen eighty-five, served a city population of about fifteen thousand. We've seen that population grow by over three times in the last thirty-six years. And so you've been able to get some great value of your existing facility. Not only has the population that the police department serves has increased by over three times. But the 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 law enforcement officers and the quantity of staff has increased by just under three, three times, not three percent, sorry. And so we've really grown from, you know, a commission staff of twenty-three up to a commission staff of sixty-three. And a civilian staff has kind of grown by three times as well. Meanwhile, the square footage of your existing facility, which was originally constructed as about fifteen thousand square feet. The city's been able to, you know, expand it, but only by about twenty percent to get up to its current size, which is about eighteen thousand square feet. So just by looking at that, the amount of growth of the your, the city's population, as well as the law enforcement department has really grown and really there's a need to be able to kind of go to a new facility. But just want to definitely state that the existing facility has been able to support the city for nearly forty years. And what we've been able to really look at from the planning and the design process is to develop a new facility that will be able to support the community for the next forty years as well. So getting into the site and the site constraints a little bit. What this graphic and images are really trying to show is really what we're, we're dealing with on the site, which is law to trees. And the really the goal and the driver behind a lot of the design decisions that ultimately we've been made is to try to preserve as many trees as possible. But then also to try to remediate and eliminate some of the unhealthy trees that are actually within within the site and within the forest. So again, really trying to manage the unhealthy trees and to be able to kind of create a much more safe, a much more healthy forest is really the driver or a a driver of the project. So what we really wanted to kind of show here is the the image here on the bottom left. That's a really large maple tree cluster, really at the the entrance onto the existing site. And we want to really use that as an accent feature and make sure that we're able to preserve that tree and some of the other very substantial trees onto the site. What we were able to 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 learn through the design process to this point was that there is actually quite a few unhealthy trees on the site and they suffer from something called laminated root rot. And there's an an image of the disease here on the bottom right hand side. And working with the the arborist, we've been able to determine the trees that are actually infected. And the ones that are within a zone of the trees that are infected that should be removed, so they don't become infected as well. And it's actually a substantial amount of trees within the site. So ultimately, we made some design decisions to make sure that we located parking in the building and made other design decisions to knowing that those trees were going to have to be removed anyways, to be able to make sure that the we were limiting the amount of other trees and healthy trees that would be have to be removed as part of this. So these were some things that we had in mind as we were really kind of looking at this. So while we move on to the next slide as well. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Brian and he's going to talk a little bit more about the site design. And what's really kind of unique about the site with regards to a police facility, as well as walk you through some of the floor plans and some of the unique features that we've kind of incorporated into that as well. So Brian?
Sure, thanks, Bill. We just want to point out to begin with that that this is approximately the the limits of the existing police facility. And so that's a comparison. This is partially two levels. The new building is also proposed to be partially two levels. Think of it as a walkout basement. We're trying to take advantage of the the actual site and the slope of the site. It's one of the reasons why the building's actually curved. We're trying to limit the amount of earthwork and still be able to provide two secure ways in and out of the secure parking on the backside of the building. So I want to point out that there is this square here and we've, we've identified that as a future training component. Originally in the planning, this was identified as something we really need. Right now, we're, we're working through what that means from a cost and budget standpoint. We are planning that and have a location for it. If the budget supports it, we can get it in, but you can see right now we're, we're really thinking this is a future piece to be added. When we talk about policing, I just want to point out quickly that in the past two years, the the dialogue about policing has changed significantly. And policing over the past ten years has really changed significantly. And I, and I want to talk about three things and I'll let Chief correct me if any of these are wrong or he needs to add to them. One of them is training and how important training is. The, the integration of training into kind of the daily routine of officers is critical. Most departments now do some type of classroom training in their existing building, which we've provided for in this planned footprint. But to be able to do range training and to be able to do de-escalation and defensive tactics training. Those are things that are becoming really important. And access to ranges, even if they're just for qualifications to meet state certifications, those are important as well. Point number two I want to make is, is the interaction with the community and how co-responders, social services are integrated. And then how victim services have changed even within the building. The third is the increase in civilian staff. And incorporating civilian staff into police departments is becoming more and more important as time goes on. So these are all things that we we've thought about and incorporated into this building. And then these two graphics over here kind of show a direct comparison of total square footage. These are, these are kind of to scale and you'll see this is the existing facility and this is the identified need. And then from a parking standpoint, this is currently what's there and then this is the. I want to, before we move on to these next ones, I want to point out a couple of things here. This area, this area, and then a portion of this area back here on the second floor are all planned for future growth. And so we're trying to think about where that would be needed in the building. And one of the unique things about Lacey is the potential Lacey has to increase population. And so we need to be able to plan for a building that can support that increase, whether we build it now or not. And so we're putting these things strategically in the building so that if that growth is needed, this is where it would go and this is what is needed. And so we've gone through those studies and analyzed staffing from that standpoint as well. Along with that, you can see this dotted line over here. And and that's kind of the extent of the secure side. And what that allows us to do is significantly increase parking as well in the future if we need to. And and this side, as you all know, is is very, there's, there's some topography associated with it, you know, it's on a hill essentially. And so being able to plan for that now and deal with it so that the it's I hate to use the word future proof, but at least future planned so that we can make good decisions is inherent in this design. And just quickly, here, here's kind of the two-story comparison. Again, this one, this one, you kind of have the ground level, you're familiar with it and you go up to the second level. The proposed one, you actually, the public would enter on what would be the same level as this facility. And then, as I mentioned earlier, it'd kind of be a walkout basement. So then you kind of go down again to take advantage of the topography.
That's the color coding thing.
The, the color coding, we can, I'll show you, maybe this will show it a little better. It's just all the different components. And so this is the public area and this is kind of where the secure line would be. And so we would, we would have a secure area. The public would not pass this point unescorted into the secure side of the building. And then here on this main level, we have the public, we have administration, we have records. We have investigations and then some of the community support officers are here. And then we also have thi- this green area is the break room and it's kind of odd that the break rooms on the, on the, on this floor instead of down with operations, it's on the bottom floor. But we're very intentional about that because in the, in the existing building, they're forced into these relationships. And for the most part, they're, I would say they're probably reasonably healthy. But they're forced to communicate just because they're in such close proximity to each other. When we put the break room on, on this floor, that makes people move up and down in the building and allows for some of that cross communication to happen that's necessary and still provide that, that real family feel that the department has. And so we're trying to key in with some of the design on some of the things that are really important to the department currently. And then as we move down to the bottom floor, this big area here is property and evidence. Significantly larger than what we have now. That doesn't mean it's oversized. That's just what, this is what the difference is. And as we grow, more things become evidence and as state law and mandates change, more things have to be kept for a longer period of time. And so being able to plan appropriately for the property and evidence is really important. This area is really about the patrol. And what it is, is a way to get the officers in and out and out into the community where they belong. And so we're trying to be very efficient with the movements of the patrol officers. This area is the locker room and fitness room. And so again, this amenity is open to the entire building, but since the patrol officers would use it more frequently, this is essentially their office, their locker room is, that's about all they get here, that's theirs. And so that's why we get that, we have that in close proximity. This area is just things that are needed for the building, mechanical systems, IT, those kinds of things. And then this blue area is the Sallyport and Holding area. And so this takes care of of those functions within the department. And then just thinking about the building, we really want this to be a campus building. This fits in from a scale perspective, it's larger than the the existing police department. But when we look at city hall and the police department building combined, the footprints seem about equal. And we don't want this to be a taller, we want it to be in, at least from, from the approach, we actually want it to be a lower building than city hall. And it's kind of this low slung, still part of the woods building. And what's really, what's really cool about this and exciting for us is this, this idea of it being a beacon of safety. And so that's why we kind of have this dusky shot with the lights on. It's twenty-four seven building. We want the public to be aware of this building. We also want it to be a safe haven for the public. Whether they're coming here under duress or they just enter the site and understand, yes, that's who's there. This little bit of glowy nature that we see here, this is the front entry and then this is that community room that that doubles as the training room. And so this really is for the public, the public side of the building. And then just a, just a quick rendering of the interior. Again, very humble materials, but very local. And we're trying to keep it very simple and really make sure we're maximizing the dollars that we have to spend. And now, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer them about any of those slides. If not, we can jump in and and Bill can talk kind of about where we are with the, with the budget and schedule.
Is it possible to bring in or show the mayor and council member Cox on the screen at the same time as just so we can, they may have, if, just in case they have questions?
Sure. No, we're, we're, we're good. So no questions. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brian. And so with that, yeah, we just wanted to kind of walk you through where the cost estimate and the budgets are currently at. So wanted to kind of recap where we were at, at the completion of the pre-design process, which wrapped up in January of twenty twenty-one. So at that point in time, we had an approximate construction budget of roughly twenty-nine million at that point in time. The graphic on the bottom left-hand side really starts is illustrating typical or or measured escalation over the last fifteen years or so. And essentially where we completed the pre-design is where the arrow is pointing there at the, the beginning of twenty twenty-one. At that point, we've seen extensive hyper escalation occurring in twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two. And so that's definitely been something that we've, has affected our overall construction costs. Since that has an effect all the way through all labor as well as material costs. On the right-hand side is a graphic that really is looking at measurable construction costs over the last thirteen years or so here in, in Washington and within the Seattle market. And one thing I want to point out is you can see here from the, the gray bars are the national averages. And then the blue line is really the Seattle and Western Washington construction market. As you can see from that, typically and historically, Seattle and the Washington market has been slightly above the national average. But as you can see, just in the last several years, essentially, since the pre-design was, was completed, not only have we had a huge uptick with regard to escalation, but there's also been supply chain issues associated with, with COVID as well as lack of materials and labor, which has really affected the increases in construction costs over the last two years. And then you also end up seeing that magnified within the Washington, state of Washington and Seattle marketplace that we've actually separated even more from the national average. And so those, the factors of hyper escalation over the last two years, as well as construction costs increasing here in, in the Northwest, we've had, have an effect on our construction budgets. So going on to the, the next slide, which is really, this is where our, our construction budget and our cost estimate, cost estimate as of last month currently stands. And so now our construction costs are, and our budgets currently add about thirty-eight million dollars. We have, still have some remaining soft costs that have not been encumbered by the, by the city of about thirteen million dollars. So we have a remaining total project cost, which would be a combination of the construction as well as the soft costs between forty-eight, or sorry, forty-nine and fifty-two million dollars. So what makes up each one of these costs? And what are some of the assumptions that we've kind of made based off of the, these construction budgets? So the construction, the, the conditions of, of construction and those assumptions that we made is we're anticipating a, a first quarter of twenty twenty-four start of construction. And I'll, the next slide, I'll end up showing you really what our schedule looks like and how we're able to get to that point of, of starting construction at that point in time. We've also anticipated based off of the size of the project and the complexity of the site and the, and the project that this project will take about twenty-four months to, to build. And so we factored all that into the construction budgets. We also have the assumption that we'll be, this being a public project will be, the contractor will be having to pay prevailing wages. And so the asterisk that we have with regard to the construction start date of the beginning of twenty twenty-four is that does have a real, real impact. If we have any delays or really any shift in that construction start date, that we can actually see actual increases in construction costs to the project on a monthly basis. And based off of those, that analysis, what we've seen is if anything starts to shift, this project will see about two hundred. anything starts to shift, um, this project will see about two hundred and sixty thousand to about three hundred thousand dollar increase per month, um, to the project costs, uh, so.
Hey Bill, there's a, there's a question.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. I'm just curious, is there any chance or any possibility of starting earlier? Of getting, breaking ground in twenty-three instead of first quarter of twenty-four?
Um, well, why don't we go to the next slide really quickly and we can kind of talk through that a little bit? So we, we did analyze a couple of different project delivery models, uh, and what we're anticipating and ultimately what we're, we're, we're approaching the project with is as a design bid build delivery model, which is essentially, uh, it's a traditional construction a- and project delivery, which is you complete the full design, you bid the project out, the marketplace establishes exactly what the cost is going to be, the city contracts that, uh, that contract, the, the construction contract with the, the selected apparent low bidder, the general contractor, and then the contractor moves forward with construction. We did analyze, uh, alternative project delivery, which would be able to get a contractor on early while design is still progressing. Um, but, um, what we've actually kind of looked at now, based off of the timing of the project and everything else, that we really wouldn't save any time to be able to, because we'd have to go through an approval process through the state to allow, uh, the city to go through, um, a CMGC alternative project delivery. Um, so really looking at this, i- if anything, if we start a little bit earlier, uh, we'd have to condense the rain, remaining, uh, phases of design to try to condense the schedule to be able to pull bidding a little bit further back. Um, and which would allow us to get a contractor under contract a little bit earlier. Um, so we're, um, there's not a lot of flexibility, there's some. And obviously when we advance into the, uh, uh, the next phase of design, we will look at seeing how we can possibly condense the design process anymore. Um, and as you can kind of see from the schedule, we actually have permitting occurring, uh, while the design is still being completed. Um, and so right around my eighty percent, uh, eighty to ninety percent design will be submitting that for building permit. Um, and then during that time, while we're finally finalizing design as well as beginning, as well as getting, uh, the city buildings department, um, comments back, we'll incorporate those into the final documents and then issue that as the one hundred percent bid set to the, the marketplace to be able to get contractors to do their bid. Um, so that's kind of the timing of, of this, and we've already kind of looked at, uh, how much we can condense it. Um, and there's not a huge amount that we, we can do, but we'll, we'll definitely investigate that even more.
Thank you.
So going back, uh, to the prev- previous slide. So what's within, uh, the construction cost? So obviously that's the building cost, it's the tree removal and all the site work, um, as Brian indicated, you know, where there's some grading and balancing of the site that ultimately we have to be able to do, that's extending and bringing the utilities, uh, into the building. Uh, there's, we also have some additional contingencies still built in. So we have ten percent design contingency, which is very standardized within the industry. So what, essentially what that is, is so the elements and items that we don't fully understand right now is part of that ten percent uh, design contingency. As the design continues to advance forward, um, and those elements and quantities of those elements are further designed, that design contingency turns into line item cost for elements and systems that are going within the building. We also are a plan, um, on having a little over ten percent of escalation contingency. So that's going to be able to get us from this point right now up to the bid day. And that, uh, to accommodate escalation and increases in construction cost between now and the point where the marketplace is establishing the cost for the project. Uh, we also have, um, uh, the contractor's cost built into the construction cost, which is their general conditions. Um, their overhead and their profit, any bonding that needs to occur, their general liability, insurance, builder's risk, as well as there being no taxes. And so that all rolled up gets you into the construction costs. The soft costs are the remainder of the, uh, the design services fees, um, some project management costs, uh, for the city. Uh, construction contingency, which is cons- contingency that the city owns. So once the project starts in construction, that will be able to buy out additional, um, aspects of the project or be able to fund unforeseen conditions. So anything that would be actually underneath, uh, the soil that was really not known and then it's discovered during the construction activities, that contingency fund would be able to support, uh, any of those unknowns. Um, additional inspection and commissioning, um, costs that the city will incur as well as FFNE, which is fixtures, furniture and equipment. So essentially everything within the building, um, uh, to be able to make it, uh, operate. Um, and so you know, buying of new furniture and, um, and you know, anything that's really not bolted down within the, uh, the building would be within those line items as well as the moving costs. So to be able to move out of the existing facility and over into the new and transport any of the existing equipment or, or technology and just people over into the new facility as well as the sales tax are all part of the soft cost numbers. Um, one thing I would note here is what you're not seeing is the land acquisitions, uh, land acquisition costs um, are not included in the soft costs. The, so those are already been, um, committed or part of sunk costs that the city has already allocated.
Is the contingency amount, is that a, is that a percentage or is it a flat number? It's a percentage?
The construction con- contingency is a percentage, yes.
It's the, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the design contingency. So as we develop the plans and we firm up everything in the, in the building and we add those layers of information, we can redo this design contingency.
Yeah.
Contractor contingency, we would, that would be on their side and they would just keep that until, uh, that was negotiated with the city to start releasing some of that contingency if available.
I recall the construction contingency is held at five percent currently.
Five percent.
Yep. And so, uh, a- as Brian, okay, indicated there, um, as, um, risk to the project is mitigated. So once you start getting out of the ground, so once all the, the, a lot of the site work is done, foundations are in, the building is starting to come out of the ground, um, that's really where the bulk of a lot of those unforeseen conditions and construction, uh, risk actually is. So at that point in time, if the contingency, uh, the construction contingency is still, um, you know, I guess more robust for that ti- point in time, there could be some opportunities for the city to make a, a decision to actually use that construction contingency to buy out um, other aspects or alternates, um, within the project at that time if, um, as way of, of kind of handling risk as well. So if that makes sense. Any other questions with regard to costs? Okay.
I do. This is Councilmember Cox, um, excuse me. I keep hearing, you know, if things are going to go up and, up and up and up. Pardon me, and cost. If, if there are any delays, um, we are starting to see maybe a little cooling of inflation and I just wonder whether, you know, how how fine a point you can put on the expected increase in costs and whether.
Right.
The things.
So the, uh, as you know, the graphics kind of showed on the previous pages that, um, uh, we were actually seeing something in, um, the, the lower to upper teens, um, increases annually in twenty twenty-one and through twenty twenty-two um, in construction cost values. And again, a lot of that was being driven or a portion of that was being driven, um, by escalation. And so as you indicated, um, that with a little bit of the cooling with regard to, uh, escalation goes, we're at, we are actually anticipating only about six percent per year um, increase in construction costs due to a lower rate of, uh, escalation occurring over the next couple of years. So that's essentially what we're kind of using. We're already kind of assuming there's going to be a downtick, um, in escalation. And so, uh, but, uh, so we've already have that, uh, accommodated within this, uh, this budget. You know, historically, uh, construction escalation a- and increases have been, um, anywhere from three to five percent. So we're still a little bit conservative with the numbers that we're ultimately carrying. Um, but because there's still some unknowns that are occurring that has some effects due to, um, uh, COVID and the ripple effects that have, uh, continued to occur within the construction market with regard to supply chain. Um, so we have already accommodated some of that, uh, within these numbers.
So you're saying there's no good financial news then?
Um, well, i- i- it, again, there is, that's gonna, that is affecting and a lot of that's going to be affected outside of the state of Washington, unfortunately. So there's policy decisions that are being made at the federal level, um, as well as global supply and global effects, economic effects that are going to have some, um, um, effects obviously on the, on our project and, uh, construction and escalation costs within the state of Washington. So, um, it's hard to kind of look into the crystal ball, but we've done it the best that we can. Um, and you know, this is, is, uh, w- we, the, the biggest concern that we have is not having enough escalation and contingencies built in. And then if there happens to be an u- uptick, then all of a sudden the project is even more, um, at risk. So we're not too conservative, but we feel that we're, we're, we're carrying the right balance at this point, um, for the unforeseen conditions over the next year or so.
The only good news that we're starting to see and, and right now we are working, uh, on similar projects in Houston, Dallas, Kansas City, South Dakota and Denver. And across the board, what we're seeing is a trend in the supply chain being a lot more predictable, which helps us with the construction schedule. Don't take that to mean that prices are going down. That just means we're not seeing some of the schedule delays that impact the pricing because of the time delays. And so the, the contractors that we're working with now are able to build more predictable schedules and the supply chain issues are starting to decrease. Um, and so that's, that's the only bit of good news that, that I have to share, at least from, from working at these facilities uh, across the, across the country. It's a whole lot better than last year.
Well, maybe I can insert a couple of comments on this. Obviously, when you see a number of forty-nine to fifty-two, that's larger than when we came into this. Um, I don't think that changes the course that we're recommending, which is the councilmatic bond process. Um, I think what that means is that we're going to have to look a little bit deeper into reserves. We're going to make some different priorities. Um, I think we still want to stay in a targeted range of not borrowing more than fifteen to seventeen million. So if there's a ten million dollar gap, we're going to just have to look at that. We're going to have a reserve discussion uh, later in the year. So we'll have another discussion about that to see if we can take some other, um, reserves or other funds and put that toward that gap. The other thing, this is a two-year project. So when we were looking at our reserves, we were looking at a twenty twenty-one fiscal year. We haven't ended twenty twenty-two yet, so we'll take a look at that and then twenty twenty-three may actually help us too. I'm still optimistic about the bid climate maybe in twenty twenty-four, so we don't know until those come in. And so hopefully some of those numbers will actually be in our favor, so.
The, the fact of the matter is, it's a project we have to do. So whether it's forty million, fifty million, whatever it winds up being, it, it's a project we have to do. It's not optional. And, you know, I spent some time with you and the chief in the, in the police station, giving tours to the public, you know, during, uh, cops cars and kids. I don't think any person that we gave a tour to wouldn't agree that this is a project that has to happen.
Right. Well, and time definitely is on our side with Bill had mentioned about, you know, every, every delay that we do, this project's not going to be in our favor typically. So the sooner this is underway, the sooner it gets finished in design. And as we approach a hundred percent design, we'll have a better idea what those costs are too. I assume we're still doing some BE work, value engineering.
Every day.
So that is the update. When, when we come back to council, maybe fifty percent design or ninety?
Sixty.
Okay. You know, and that might be.
Um, Bill, do, what do we have targeted for the sixty percent design completion at this point?
It's in, I believe it was in May.
May, June.
So we'll have another round of cost estimating at that point.
Yes.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and that, you know, targeting that is based off of, uh, essentially being a notice proceed to move into sixty percent design uh, in December, uh, which then allows us to, um, transition through that design phase, uh, throughout the first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Bill. We, we do intend to bring in front of council, uh, amendment to the contract with our design team for the remainder, their services to carry us into next year.
Thank you.
Just don't share.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Evan, is the, um, are we going to go on to our next agenda item?
Ready.
Okay. So our next agenda is the federal legislative update and agenda. Hey Joel.
Well, good evening.
Good.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Um, you can see we've got, uh, Joel Rubin and David Hodges joining us, uh, from CFM Advocates. And in just a second, they're going to go through a presentation that's going to provide kind of a high-level overview of what they're seeing at the federal level. And then we're going to take a deeper dive into our twenty twenty-three, uh, federal priorities. I brought copies of the priorities as well here. So if you can take, uh, take two copies, because the state priority is also, so, uh, yeah, you want two sheets each. One thing I just wanted to point out before I let, uh, Joel and David take over here is when we were making the, uh, federal priorities as well as the state priorities, one thing we really wanted to keep in mind was our work plan and making sure that what we were looking to do really aligned well with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four work plan. So you'll find as you're looking through the, um, graphs that we're going to review tonight, the alignment with, you know, quality, transportation and infrastructure, a safe and secure community, environmental stewardship, a vibrant place to live, work, play. And so, um, that has been part of how we've been approaching and looking on how we can leverage what's coming at the federal level, state level with what we have, uh, locally. And also, you know, keeping in mind as part of that also, how we can really leverage, um, you know, staff and ongoing and existing projects. So with that, I will turn it over to Joel Rubin and David Hodges.
Oh, thanks so much, Shannon. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, good to see you, council. Uh, my name's Joel Rubin, uh, from CFM Advocates. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to zoom in today. What today is, and it will, and we'll keep it relatively brief, is a quick overview of some of the agenda items that Shannon mentioned that we're looking at for twenty twenty-three. This, uh, and I consider this kind of a first touch for your federal agenda for next year. We're going to have multiple opportunities to work with you as the council uh, and your staff to refine the list of proj- federal projects and federal policy items. But this is a good first taste of some of the things that we're, uh, looking towards for twenty-three. But since we had this opportunity to talk, we also wanted to talk about some of the previous, uh, successes from the last year. Um, and talk a little bit about, uh, the election results and some new opportunities coming out of Congress. But, uh, also pause real quick to, to make sure my, uh, I introduce my colleague, David Hodges. Um, David, you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Uh, David Hodges, uh, Vice President of Public Affairs, CFM Advocates. Um, I helped Joel with the city's advocacy efforts, um, and I am not in DC, my usual line. Um, I'm in the state down here in, uh, Southwest Washington and America's Vancouver.
And so, um, just real quick, I, I know you all have probably been watching, uh, the news, the election happened on Tuesday, the midterms. And so David and I have been, uh, our thumb, our finger, uh, finger are, are a little bit sore from pushing refresh on all these very close elections. And so David and I have been, uh, our thumb, our finger, uh, finger are, are a little bit sore from pushing refresh on all these very close elections, not only in Washington and Oregon, but across the country. As uh election returns continue to come in. So we are, have been pretty uh engaged in following that. And we'll provide a little bit of an update on what's happening nationwide with the Congress um on the House and the Senate side in a few slides. But uh, David, if you don't mind, you can move on to the next slide. So I wanted to touch real quick on some of the successes from the last couple of years. Uh, the city has done a, a really tremendous job of engaging with the congressional delegation. This is a, a testament to the leadership from the mayor and council and putting priorities forward that resonate with your congressional delegation and with the federal agencies as well. Um, you've been very successful in securing, and this is probably one of the few communities in Washington State that have secured a uh, what they call now is congressionally-directed spending item, or they formerly called them earmarks. Uh, two years in a row, so last year in twenty-one. Uh, Senators Cantwell and Congresswoman Strickland were able to secure five hundred thousand dollars for the Veterans Hub. This will provide better accessibility to the uh Veterans Hub in terms of elevators, ADA improvements. You have approximately thirty-two thousand veterans, as you all know, in the city, of which about twenty-four percent of those veterans have a service-disabled uh disability. So access- accessibility to the Veterans Hub is extremely important. And that five hundred thousand dollars is going to go a long way to make sure that everyone who wants to access the Veterans Hub can access it. Um, also, last year, uh, the Makerspace, we were successful in securing an EDA Economic Development Administration grant through the Department of Commerce for a million dollars to help some of your entrepreneurs uh in the community develop some of their exciting uh business ideas. In addition, we worked a lot of hours on the American Rescue Plan where the city was able to see a direct allocation of six-point-eight million dollars. Uh, the bipartisan infrastructure law passed last year at one-point-two trillion dollars in new investments in transportation, water, broadband, um, and a host of other investments uh nationwide. Uh, one of the interesting things that I always note is uh i- in recent polling, eighty, over eighty percent of the country doesn't think that the bipartisan infrastructure law had even, has even passed. So I think we all need to do a better job of uh making sure that folks know that the bill has passed and that the money is starting to flow. It's a five-year bill, so it's going to take some time to get these infrastructure dollars out. But the uh, there's a lot of good opportunities for the city and that infrastructure package. Um, and also, this is in red. This is something that's a little uh frustrating at the end of the day, but the good thing is we, we, we were able to support with Congresswoman Strickland's cha- uh leadership, a six-million-dollar uh mark for the College Street in the House Invest Act. Unfortunately, that bill uh ultimately died. It turned into the infrastructure package where they removed all of those community-directed spending projects. But uh, we were still proud of being able to get that i- in addition to the Veterans Hub, two big uh projects for the city uh in twenty-one. In twenty-two, we have, uh, so we're in November right now, so a lot of these decisions on spending items will be decided most likely by December sixteenth. So we have two uh pending items. The Makerspace expansion, uh Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell were able to secure a million-dollar earmark or a million-dollar community-directed spending item uh in the Senate Appropriations Bill to expand the Makerspace to make sure, you know, you all, I did a tour. We set up tours with Murray's office and Strickland's office just to see the Makerspace. It's clear that you all are running out of space there, and there's a lot of cool and exciting things that are happening. You all need more space to do that. Uh, the million dollars would go a lo- long way to help that happen. Uh, that is a pending request. Uh, it's in the appropriations bill and we expect it to be finalized. Like I said, around mid-December, when Congress comes back here and finishes their appropriation spending bill. So excited to, to have that in the bill, but that's why it's yellow. It's not a done deal yet. We also worked with you and your uh city staff to submit a Safe Streets for All Planning Grant for sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, what's exciting about this is uh if you are successful in receiving the planning grant for Safe Streets for All, it allows you to build out a um, uh, a planning document that looks at all of the um high-traffic areas, high fatality areas, high accident areas in the city, and then ultimately go after Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant dollars uh to actually construct, make uh positive uh improvements in those corridors to reduce and eliminate fatalities and serious uh injuries. So um, between twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we're feel like uh, we've had a good record of success. Your congressional delegation has been extremely supportive and your staff has been amazing in putting these projects together. So we wanted to uh make sure that uh, they receive credit as well for this, but um uh, it, it's been a good couple of years. David, I don't know if you have anything else to add on the, the recent successes.
No, just really highlighting again, yeah, the two earmarks in two years um is uh, is really exciting to see, have really strong support from the congressional delegation for City of Lacey. Um, well, thanks, Joel. We're gonna move over to um your draft uh twenty-twenty-three federal agenda. Um, just expanding on some of these recent successes, we've been working with city staff to develop this. Um, you know, between congressional earmarking, the bipartisan infrastructure law, um, the Inflation Reduction Act, which Joel will talk a little bit about at the end or towards the end of our presentation, there's a number of funding opportunities um that we've been working to align some of the city's priorities with, um, that simply just didn't exist a few years ago. So it's really exciting to see all of these new federal channels and the opportunities um to try to access some of this um funding that the federal government is um doling out right now. Um, so document is still in draft form, obviously, and certainly, um, you know, Shannon alluded to, I'm welcoming feedback um as we work to finalize this and kind of hone it in with city staff. Um, we're also waiting on some final determinations on the control of Congress. Joel mentioned we're hitting refresh constantly um on our computers, seeing who's going to end up controlling uh the Senate and the House. Um, you know, we may not know until next week, frankly. Um, but some of these uh funding opportunities, particularly earmarks, congressionally-directed spending, um, whatever the name is that people know them by. Um, we think that they will continue. You know, they went away for ten years. Um, they came back the last two years. Um, if Republicans take control of the Senate, they um haven't participated in earmarking in the same way that the Republican Caucus and the House has. Um, so it's likely, in our view, that earmarks should Republicans take the Senate um will not continue past this year. Um, so there's some, uh, you know, trying to see how that uh pans out to see how that will modify your agenda a little bit. Um, so talking about projects, just moving right into the College Street uh Corridor Safety Improvement Project. Um, eighteen million-dollar request for that. We actually went after uh funding for that this year in the Raze Program, formerly called Build, formerly called Tiger. Um, every administration calls this grant program something different. Um, ultimately, you were not successful, but you earned a recommended rating on that application. Um, it takes several years, two, three, sometimes even four years to um get through this highly competitive program. But the fact that you were rated recommended this year is really encouraging. Um, in your first year getting that, um, we just need to get it up to that highly recommended level, which at that point, it goes to the Secretary of Transportation, who makes the final determinations on these. Um, so we had a call with DOT staff um earlier this week. They had some really excellent pointers for us or some feedback, I should say, um, on areas of the application we could improve. And we are planning to um again, submit that again on the city's behalf this year. And then also looking at some other potential funding opportunities um for College Street, again, through earmarking, um, but also potentially through the Inflation Reduction Act, which I'm going to reference, keep referencing. We'll get to that a little bit at the end. Um, so moving on from that, the Emergency Operations Center. Um, we um are planning a one-million-dollar request for that and still exploring some potential opportunities for that, funding opportunities for that. One of them is earmarks, but there's also resiliency funding um that came through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. Um, and again, just uh looking for some opportunities there that may, you may be able to access to help with the funding for that project. Um, the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. This has actually been really a popular um type of project in Congress through earmarks. Um, there have been a number of communities that have received um funding for this from members of Congress. And again, it's just eliminating uh sewer systems, getting you, or excuse me, eliminating septic systems to get you on a centralized sewer system, um, which is great for the environment. Um, and one of the earmark opportunities we're looking at, but also there's a new program in the bipartisan infrastructure bill um that actually would help potentially fund this type of project. Um, and then we have two, kind of rounding it out here on the project list, two uh future opportunities.
Got a question? Yeah. I just had a quick question on the, on the requested amount for the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. Um, is, is that, is that, is that the maximum that we uh request amount that we can go with? Is that, is that why that's one minute? Because we all know that that's.
He had a couple of zeros.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would say, you know, that, again, this is a fluid. We're developing this document. That is definitely, I, I would argue, the sweet spot for an earmark. Um, some of these other grant programs that we're looking at, you could potentially do more. Um, but yeah, definitely, it's not as much as we would like to see, but it definitely can help chip away um at project cost. And Joel, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that, but.
Well, I, I would say typically, uh, the community-directed spending, the, the average is around a million. I think if we can make a good case that you're going to be focusing a lot of the project um benefits to lower-income communities, that you could get that number up to, up to three million dollars. You're not, you're probably not ten million, but you could probably get up to three million if there's some lower-income communities that would directly benefit from it.
Is that, is that one-time uh applicant money, or is it, are we able to go back if we show some improvement or something like that? Cause.
Yeah, you, I, you can certainly go back, particularly with an earmark. If you have a really compelling project, um, you can definitely go back. Um, one of the programs we're looking at is this new one in the, um, it's, it hasn't been stood up yet. So Congress authorized it. It's called Connection to um Public Works uh Grant Program. Congress authorized it, but didn't actually um put any funding into it yet. So that's one thing we did put on your agenda was, you know, funding that program, because that one could actually potentially um fund, you know, a bigger dollar amount. But we just without that program actually being stood up yet by the administration, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to know at this stage.
All right, thank you.
And that, and that is something that is incorporated in the draft in front of you is that we do want that program to be funded so that we could potentially go after that, you know, once there is money allocated to it, um, in addition, or in lieu of going after the direct appropriation.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and then, yeah, the future projects we have on here, the uh Depot District Museum and Cultural Center, and then Early Child and Youth Learning Center. These projects are still sort of in development. Um, but we think they are going to be of great interest to the congressional delegation, and we want to, we want to start an education effort um pretty early so that when we do uh go uh looking for federal investments on that, that they have some familiarity with the projects. So I'm going to use more of um policy-related stuff versus um kind of project-specific. Um, so, you know, up and up there, obviously, the I-five corridor between Tom Water and Mounds Road, um, big regional priority. Uh, want to ensure that we're supporting that regional effort, um, and speaking with your congressional delegation about that. Uh, support for the Puget Sound SOS Act. So this is a bill that originated with former Congressman Heck. Um, and Congresswoman Strickland has now taken that mantle along with Congressman Kilmer, um, which would really um expand the federal government's role and bring additional resources, uh, money resources, I should say, to uh the Puget Sound cleanup effort.
The Septic to Sewer Program could significantly be benefited by the Puget Sound SOS Act, because that could be a another funding source to get rid of some of the pollutants uh that, that impact the sound, which is the septic systems.
Yeah, thank you, Joel. And that's, that's an excellent point. And that's the one where we might see bigger dollar figures if that ends up passing um for specific projects. Um, support for the Build America by America. This is a, a bit of a nuanced position. Um, so Build America by America, you know, I think that's something um, yeah, to get behind. Uh, definitely, there's been um, with global supply chain uh issues, it's been difficult for a lot of communities to ensure that they're sourcing all the materials um that they need for this uh to comply with Build America by America policy. Um, and from what our understanding, there's been some city projects um that have been delayed uh because they aren't able to comply um with the Build America by America, simply because there's no, um, again, the supply chain uh challenges have made it difficult. Uh, support for a national housing and homeless strategy. This has been um on your agenda a few years now. Uh, again, just encouraging uh the federal government to really uh come up with a national strategy and bring additional resources uh to the housing and homeless issues that local communities such as yourselves are uh seeing and have been uh having to deal with for quite some time. Uh, Support Defense Community Infrastructure Program. Um, so this is a program um that's fairly, it's been around for a while, but it was only recently funded. Um, actually, we've incorporated dollars to it. Um, but its intent is to support military communities on and off base, uh, including those projects that are intended to enhance military families' quality of life. Uh, so things like community centers or even the depot, uh museum, early learning centers, et cetera, could potentially qualify. Um, again, it's something that has fallen off. Sometimes with Congress, they haven't appropriated funding for it. So we just want to make sure uh, we're keeping the drumbeat on that, making sure the delegation knows that this is a potential um opportunity for the City of Lacey, given your um relatively high military veterans population uh that would qualify for funding from this program. And then all right, I thought I heard something.
Oh, it was clearing my throat. Go ahead.
Okay, gotcha. It's hard when you're not in the room. Um, so rounding it out here, support for community programs, CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, obviously uh big flexibility or a lot of flexibility in that funding for local communities. Um, and the cops program, which uh can help uh law enforcement uh with resources, hiring additional police officers, uh, things of that nature. Um, so that's your uh draft federal agenda as it is right now. Again, we are working with uh city staff to finalize this ideally before the beginning of the next Congress in early January.
Can we, can we touch on the I-five corridor just, just real quick? Um, if, if if I'm right, the, the, the I-four Nisqually corridor has been classified as uh, uh, something of a national security risk or uh i- in that classification, um, can you touch on how that might enhance or or help us get down the road with, with that funding if, if indeed it has that classification?
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly makes it more competitive and more compelling, definitely. Um, and Joel, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that, but I mean, I, I, I think that classification is hugely helpful to bringing additional um federal investments to that.
Yeah, I think the big challenge, the, the good thing at the federal level is there are multiple multi-billion-dollar pots of money to help with the Nisqually Bridge in that uh entire corridor. That, these pots of money will be around. They started this year and they'll be around for four more years. Uh, this is where you could see investments of a hundred million, two-hundred million, three-hundred million plus in federal funding. The challenge that we have is that you do need that state buy-in first, because the feds are not going to be the first people to come in with federal resources if there's not a financing plan to finish the construction of the project. So if there is that state buy-in, there are multiple federal funding pots of money that I think that because of what you're saying in terms of readiness and uh, uh, the need to replace the bridge and the, and prove the uh corridor, what it means to the military. Uh, that would be very helpful in your competitiveness and going after federal funds, but we do need that state share to, to help us at the federal level to make it a, a competitive project. And I know that's, that, that's I know that's a challenge, but that's something that, that we're going to need some help with at the federal level.
And so not to, to get ahead of us and get to the next item, but really looking at the nexus between um the transportation package at the state and a part of our request at the state level is going to be to age that. So those fundings, uh, those funds come earlier uh in the sixteen-year package rather than later in the sixteen-year package. And we'll, we'll get into more detail in just a second on that.
Is there any chance under, in the community projects uh, any place we could ask for any money for, uh, for the police station? If they know, we'll use a bunch of reserves, but.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the one thing the, the feds do not spend money on is uh police construction projects. They do police equipment, they do police personnel, but they do not do police construction projects. They just consider that a local a local uh obligation. So unfortunately, no, but what we do have on your agenda is, uh, as part of the police station, there would be an emergency operation center that's part of that. And we can go after FEMA funding, Federal Emergency Management Act, uh, agency funding to go after equipment. You could go after the building funding and construction, but that causes some problems with federalizing the actual construction of the building, and that will. but that causes some problems with federalizing the actual construction of the building and that will increase the cost of construction and you probably do not want to do that. That won't pencil out. But you could go after funding for the equipment within the building, the antenna, some generators to save some funds there.
Is FEMA on the list of funding sources for the I five corridor improvements?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is FEMA on the list of funding sources for the I five corridor improvements?
Yeah, wouldn't be FEMA necessarily. It's more there are multiple Department of Transportation programs that that are met. There's a mega projects program that has billions of dollars in it. There's a bridge replacement program that has billions of dollars in it. There's an infra, which is a freight mobility program that has billions of dollars in it. Those are the three prime candidates for federal funding for the I five corridor and the Nisqually Bridge.
All right, Joel, I'm gonna pass it over to you to talk about the Inflation Reduction Act.
Yeah, so I'm not going to go into too much detail here, but I did want to point this out. We're going to be having, and we could probably have another whole webinar just on the Inflation Reduction Act and what it could mean for the city. We're starting to have conversations with your staff. This is a bill that passed in August. And we're all trying to wrap our arms around what this actually means. There's a, this is the biggest climate change bill, biggest energy policy bill that has ever passed in the United States. It passed with Democratic vote votes only and and President Biden supporting it, ultimately Senator Manchin. And worked with Senator Schumer, Majority Leader Schumer, getting this bill done. This provides significant amount of grant resources to communities and tax rebates and other provisions that you all could tap into. I won't go into individual programs, but ultimately, at the end of the day, if you have fleet conversions to electric vehicles, electric heavy duty vehicles or smaller fleet vehicles, this can help fund those. If you all have energy, renewable energy projects like community solar projects, this could fund those. If you have weatherization and conservation programs with how with buildings, this can fund those types of projects. So there's direct grant funding opportunities there. In addition, what's unique about the bill that it provides tax rebates, tax rebates and credits, which generally have gone to individuals and businesses. They are allowing cities and counties to be eligible for these tax rebates. You'll get a direct allocation or a direct payment for investments into cleaner vehicle technology and transitioning your fleet. Going into, you can set up home rebate programs for high efficiency electricity and energy savings programs where the city can set them up. And then your local residents can take advantage of it. There's going to be multiple opportunities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and work with your, you have a Thurston Regional Climate Action Plan and all of those things within the plan. You can go after those projects and actually receive either federal grant dollars or federal tax credits to pay for some of those improvements that address global house global greenhouse gas emissions and reduces your pollution. So something that we are going to work closely with your city staff to add some projects to your federal agenda, whether it's grants or tax rebates. To take advantage of this because I know the city is is endorsed and embraced the regional county plan, and I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities here. And then this is the last slide. Obviously, we had the election midterm election on Tuesday. We won't go into too much detail unless there's questions from council. But it looks like the Republicans are on track to take back the House of Representatives, but not to the degree that the pollsters had projected. It's possible that you what you need two hundred and eighteen seats in the House. There'll probably be around two hundred and twenty-five. So maybe a five to ten seat majority. And that's going to be a very difficult majority to rule because there's the multiple factions within the Republican Party. But it's going to be a very interesting couple of years with Republican rule. There's will be a lot of just projected, probably a lot of investigations into the Biden administration, a lot of oversight hearings. And potentially, there's been talk of some impeachments of some of the Biden administration officials and potentially even the president himself. So we'll see how that all plays out. What's interesting, though, is it's going to be such a narrow majority for Republicans. There's a lot of new Republicans in, you know, areas like New York and the North New England area and California that are probably going to be more in the Biden districts. So these folks want in more democratically held districts. So if it's such a small majority of five or so Republicans, it may be hard to do some of those investigations. And on committees, they're only going to have one or two extra votes on those committees to to pass bills or to pass whatever resolutions they want to get. So it's going to be a real challenge for the Republicans to work with such a narrow majority in the House. I will say it's not a done deal, but it's probably likely that the House will be switching over to Republican control. In the Senate, it's looking likely at this point that Democrats will maintain maintain control of the Senate. There are three seats that are left undecided at this point. Arizona, Nevada, and Georgia. Arizona's look trending towards Democrat. Republicans need to pick up two of the three of those seats to get control of the Senate. Arizona seems to be trending Democrat with with Senator Mark Kelly. Nevada, the Republican Adam Laxald is leading right now. But there's a lot of votes in Clark County, which is Las Vegas, that are coming in, that are starting to chip away at that lead. So it'll be interesting to see what happens in Nevada. It's possible Arizona and Nevada could go both Democrat and then Georgia won't matter as much. But as of right now, Arizona's Democrat, Nevada's Republican, and then everything comes down to Georgia. And it's not Georgia now. It's going to be Georgia on December sixth because they have a runoff provision. If you don't get fifty percent of the vote on November eighth, which neither candidate got. There's going to be a runoff on December sixth. And so it's possibly all eyes could be on Georgia for the control of the Senate. And that is, they, I guess, I could say the election's not over and it's going to get a lot more interesting over the next month. So we'll be paying close attention to that. And I'll pass it on to David in terms of what this means for Washington State, but I'll steal some of this thunder. But if the Democrats do maintain the the control of the Senate, Senator Murray is anticipated to be the next chairwoman of the Appropriations Committee, which would be very good for Washington State. So David, I'm sorry to step on your.
First bullet point, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so obviously, that's that's exciting for Senator Murray. You know, certainly she's risen through the ranks in her thirty-plus year career in the Senate and is slated to move up even higher. And then obviously, we saw Congresswoman Strickland, I believe that race was called today, was reelected to a second term. And we know at least we're going to be gaining one new member of Congress from Washington. The third congressional district where I'm at, just south of you all is very competitive, very close, going to come right down to the wire. Congresswoman Jamie Herrera Butler, as many of you may know, was defeated in the primary by a challenger who ran against her over her vote for impeachment of former President Trump. She ultimately did not make it through that primary, creating a rare open seat in the third congressional district. Democrat Marie Glusenkamp Perez is currently narrowly ahead of the Republican Joe Kent. As more ballots are coming in, likely won't know the outcome of that until sometime next week. And again, it's anticipated that that's going to be incredibly close in either direction. And then up north of you all, Washington eighth congressional district, Congresswoman Kim Schreier is in a very close reelection race for that seat as well. That has not been called at this point and anticipate that one likely going until next week as well. And then just Joel touched a little bit on this and sort of what you know what this means for the 2023 outlook. Obviously, you know, I think we're expecting to see increased congressional oversight of the administration. Border security and crime have been really big campaign themes for Republicans running for Congress this year. Anticipate that being a big issue, especially if the House goes to the Republicans as is anticipated. Earmarks, we talked a little bit about that, just making sure, or not making, excuse me. They will continue if the Senate remains Democrats, we think, but again, up in the air a little bit. And then the 2024 presidential campaign pretty much kicked off, I would say Tuesday evening. Already, I just saw a notice come through. It sounds like former President Trump may be anticipating announcing next week that he's gonna run again for president and, you know, anticipating additional candidates will start getting in in the coming months. And President Biden himself has said he'll make a decision early in the new year on whether or not he'll seek reelection. Is it from us? If there's any questions, happy to answer those and really appreciate the time this evening.
Do we have any questions for them?
I do. Can you go back over a little bit of the infrastructure funding? At the at the top of this, you said there, people didn't even know it was there and what our opportunities might be there?
Yeah, so so there's two big bills that passed. One, the infrastructure package that passed in November of 2021 is about a year ago. And then the Inflation Reduction Act that passed in August, and that's the new bill that has a lot of new programs in there. But none of them have rolled out yet. So what we are looking at, what David and I are looking at is reading through the bill and trying to figure out what types of opportunities will be there. And so we are working with city staff to start looking at opportunities that may be eligible and competitive within those. It's about you know, the overall package is about three hundred billion dollars in climate initiatives. Some of those are tax credits, some of those are grants. So looking at ways to pair those up with city priorities is something that we're going to be working on over the coming weeks and months. But the thing right now is none of those programs have opened up yet. We're still months away from standing up those programs and many of those programs are going to be around for five to 10 years. So there's going to be time to take advantage of those. But we're trying to get ahead of the curve and start thinking about different city projects and plans, because they're actually fun plans as well, that that could benefit some of your greenhouse gas emissions goals, some of your climate change goals. And so that's kind of where we are in the process right now because none of these programs are out on the street. But we have a somewhat of a good sense of what they're going to look like when they do.
Well, thank you, Joel. It's good to see you as always and I think this council, this most of this council knows that I've been going out to DC for the past decade plus to work with Joel on getting our federal priorities passed. And I think that's one of the big reasons why we've been so successful as well as that we have Joel and and David working for us and we've had that consistent presence there. So appreciate appreciate all you do and I'll see you again in March.
Good. Looking forward to it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So next up on our agenda is our state legislative update. So just hear from the feds, now I'll hear from state.
As we'll bring up Brian and sit right on there. You know, Brian obviously has been working with the city for, Brian, how long has it been now? Six, seven, eight years?
Been that long, I believe so.
Quite a bit of time. So like years in the past, we've gotten together and very similarly with the process with with Joel and David, you know, taking a look at, you know, what's been happening in previous sessions, what we think is going to happen in this session and where there's going to be, you know, really good alignment with projects that are ongoing. And like I said, you know, with our federal legislative agenda, similarly with our state legislative agenda, looking for projects that really align well with our our work plan and capital projects. And then also looking at some policy items to take into consideration in in the 2023 session. Brian's going to go into detail about, you know, again, kind of what the environment is, what the results of the elections are. And then we'll do a high level overview of the state legislative priorities. But one thing I just wanted to highlight, in addition to the agenda that the city has typically had in past sessions, we've also created a legislative manual this year, which is a little bit different. And we'll describe that in more detail here in just a second. And so with that, I will hand it over to Brian and I'll start your your slideshow.
Great, okay. Thank you. As always, appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. We'll go through here things pretty quickly because it is getting late. But I believe as it's as appropriate, please interject or tell me to stop, slow down, or ask for clarification as necessary. It I'm, I think at this point, every government person is contractually obligated to talk a little bit about elections. So I'll just quickly talk about the statewide perspective. Things didn't change a lot in terms of like what we thought the makeup statewide of legislature was going to be since the August primary. So although they're not finalized, what we're looking at is the margins and the control of the respective state chambers to be about the same. I did this this morning. The state elect, the the Secretary of State website updated at six forty-four PM this evening. So as you are in council, so in real time, I would actually, I would actually say now in the House. It's only one seat addition in which it looks likely, that is the tenth. At the time when I published it, the seventeenth and eighteenth were still Democrats were ahead in each in one of those respective races. But as of the most recent update from Clark County, the Republicans are in the lead in the seventeenth and eighteenth and have been trending that way since election night. So if you had to ask me today what I think would happen, I think the House Democrats are going to add one seat, changing their majority from fifty-seven, forty-one to fifty-eight, forty. And then I think the Senate is going to stay the same currently in the forty-second district, which is Wacom County. Representative Schumak, who's is going against Senator Zepnick, who is a Republican. She is currently in the lead. But her percentage point is only, she's at fifty point six four and it's been trending towards the sitting senator who is Republican. So I think that's going to probably stay the same. Your delegation, lot of familiar faces there. We did add the thirty-fifth district and the redistricting. Again, it has not been finalized, but Representative Kotor looks like he will take that seat. He's currently.
McKeon's a pickup in the Senate too, though, right? It was that was held by Democrat who.
McKeon was a was
Well, he wasn't.
Not this cycle.
Well, he's, no, he's, he won the Senate seat. I'm saying it's an increase for the Republicans on the Senate side, that he was held by a Democrat. Wasn't it? Who caucus Republicans.
So, okay, I'm sorry. I, yeah, thank you. I misheard. I thought you said McKeon, not McKeon. What what I will say is he is a pickup. But the twenty-eight, twenty-one number, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. Like illustrated who caucused with the majority caucus. So that that twenty-one included included Senator Sheldon, who was a D, who caucus with the Republicans. So even though there is an actual, the the majority caucus and the number in the margins in which the majority caucus. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify. Okay. I pressed that one and it did not go forward. Problem being left handed. Okay, so just quickly on context. There's some big picture issues that we think are going to come forward. And part of the reason we're highlighting this is because as we thought about developing the agenda and specifically as we talked about this, the policy manual, which again, we'll put a pin in, but we'll go into more detail. It was informative to think about what's coming down the pike and what are some of the big issues that that the legislature is going to bring forward. We're going to see a lot of emphasis continued on housing affordability and supply. That's shown up. Representative Fadman's bill last year that had some some mandatory pieces around allowing missing middle houses, things of that nature. I very much expect to see an effort on providing an additional read for additional read assessment for affordable housing. I have had conversation with the building community. I know they've been working also with the city's community to talk about condo liability and potential reform right now. We're seeing, even in areas where we are seeing a lot of units in development, the vast majority of those units are being developed as rentals and not as, as, as either first time home buying opportunities or lower income home opportunities. So that's something that, you know, when we think about governments going to create markets, can we create markets that address some of those issues that are driving things towards rentals versus ownership? So those are some of the things we're thinking there. Um, we will continue to see probably, um, an aggressive agenda on climate, looking at electrification of not just light duty fleets, but also medium and heavy duty when practicable. Think about zero emission buses, think about sanitation services that impact perhaps denser and lower income neighborhoods first. Those are the types of things where I see some, like Go ahead.
Two stroke a ban on two stroke engines. What, what is, you talk about that a bit. Do you know anything about that?
Big blower.
Big blowers. Big blowers, lawnmowers.
Yeah.
Things of that nature.
YZ 250. My outboard on my boat.
I, I, I would not anticipate it going that far, but I would think specifically for like, like things that are public entities use for parks and maintenance. So you think there's going to be a ban on those? It has been considered and adopted in other states. Um, there was, there was legislation in front of a ban, a phase out, I think is, is not. I think I, I feel confident that legislation will be introduced. I'm not saying that it'll be passed or that will be a lead agenda, but I, I do think it will be a discussion piece in legislature.
A lot of, um, personal autograph or two strokes.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Oh, there's a lot of engines out there that are two stroke.
Marine engines are
Common use engines. Yeah.
I, I wouldn't anticipate something going as far as, as, as motorcycles and, and How do you clean up the leaves and things in parks if you can't use blowers?
You go, so California did this thing last year. I mean, there are electric versions. They're not as robust. Probably it's a two stroke, but that's where it's headed.
And I believe they have a, I think, two or three year op, like phase out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's 2028. I might be wrong. These are electric versions that are
You're starting to see steel as a leader in that area, starting to do more bad electric blower for
And then come to it as a plugin, that wouldn't work real well in a park. My yard is really small, you know?
Solar.
So I do think, so I, I do think, uh, I do think those are two, those are, you know, the practicability of it is obviously a conversation. And then, you, you know, like, that's not something that I think municipalities traditionally budget for in a replacement cycle like you would, you know, your rolling stock and other things like that. So, you know, so if there is, so I think part of that conversation is if there is a requirement, is it practicable and is it funded or serves the force for it? So on the public safety pieces, I, you know, I, I know you've been briefed pretty well on this, so I don't have to, um, I don't have to belabor these points, but um, there will be discussion on pursuit. I'm going to talk more specifically on, as we get to our legislative agenda, specifically about what, um, we're discussing here as well. The Blake legislation, so, um, two years ago, um, when the Blake decision was issued, the Blake decision specifically spoke to the constitutionality of whether strict liability is an appropriate standard. So if you have drugs on you, it used to be, it was your responsibility to know that you had drugs on you. And if you had drugs on you, you're kind of guilty of having been in possession of drugs, right? We didn't have to prove it. What the Blake case said was, is that's unconstitutional. Okay? So it didn't actually make drugs or possession of drugs illegal. It just made it more difficult to determine that an individual knowingly had drugs on them and therefore prosecuted. The legislature came in place, passed a bill that has a two-year lifespan. So that means that bill expires in July of 2023. What that bill did was it basically said, you meet an individual that's in possession of drugs, you refer them to treatment. You meet them again, you refer them to treatment again. After a second, two referrals, if you want, you can refer them to a prosecutor for a misdemeanor. So that rubric disappears. And what is put in place is the old language, which has penalties
Possession.
For possession. But does nothing to address the constitutional piece on strict liability. So you still have that hanging out there. So we strongly believe the legislature is going to look at this issue and come up with a myriad of of alternatives and potential ways of dealing with what we're seeing in our communities. Are they gonna, do you think there's any chance to actually listen to law enforcement? And they have those discussions. A couple of years ago, when they made all those legislative changes for law enforcement, they paid no attention to law enforcement. Yeah, I, I think that's accurate of what happened two years ago. I think last year, I think, uh, you know, and I Much better. Reasonable minds can, can disagree, but I, I believe that'd be a reflection that there was a lot of consultation with law enforcement. Um, I suspect that will continue. Um, I think they'll definitely have a stronger voice on pursuits than they might necessarily have on, on, on kind of the Blake piece would be my, um, would be my sense.
The, the conversation last year seemed to come after the outrage. Is that, is that what's to be expected again?
I, I have a hard time like estimating, or not estimating, but like, um, speculating for like other people and but, but, um,
Not to put you not, see, I'm just thinking, I'm just remembering last year and some of the stuff that we saw and the way it was rolled out and when, when it was presented and it was like, this is crazy how we're supposed to do this. And there was a lot of backlash because of the way it was written.
I think specifically, I think a couple of things that I'm seeing that people are responsive to is one, if you are going to have a referral system, there needs to be some sort of statewide backbone or understanding of how that's actually supported and communicated. Because you have individuals that maybe have an interaction with like a Thurston County officer, and then a City of Lacey officer or neighboring counties and states. And so for everyone to do it independently, that, that, that I think there's an acknowledgement that that isn't a practicable policy. The other piece is, I do think there's a lot of sensitivity around the, the increase in crime rates. Now, I don't necessarily believe that's going to translate to reinstating like possession, or, or I'm not sure everyone sees it that way. But I do believe that there is a, there will be a strong conversation about if our intent is to have a behavioral health response to a behavioral health issue, we need to ensure that there is more infrastructure and more organization around that behavioral response, that there is a place to send that individual for treatment, that there is some facilities that allow for different types of individuals and different types of crisis, right? So historically, we've used jail and we've used drug court and we've had these hardened facilities. What are our community facilities that could approximate those in order to treat these individuals? There's clearly big gaps there. So there'll be a lot of conversation on that.
Couple of those are being developed, but it takes years.
Okay. Um, I did skip aging the transportation package. So the last bullet, so I apologize, but we'll get back to it more as we go into our agenda. But the long and short of it is, is last year's transportation package was passed with two of the traditional three components. There was a revenue source and a list of revenue. There was a list of projects. Those are the two things that we passed. The third piece that's usually there is when those projects are given the money. I call that aging, aging the transportation list. That did not occur. So theoretically, all of those people that loved all of those projects, including us, which have, you know, we have a very important project on that list, 75 million. Okay?
Right.
We believe that money should be available to us when we're ready to move forward and spend it. There are 16 years worth of projects, okay, that, that from a revenue standpoint. And everybody thinks that they're in line first.
So when, when those guys are talking about, when those guys are talking about state buy-in, you know, I couldn't help but the, the, the $75 million. Is that, that's, that's not the, the buy-in level that they're talking about? Is that not a consideration?
It's, yeah.
Starts.
It's a start. Okay. So are we, are we talking about 200 million, 500 worst, worst?
We requested 200 million. 75 million is, is a start, but it's likely, you know, what we're going to have for the foreseeable future, usually transportation packages happen on the six to 10 year.
The tip.
A rise, you know, like every so, you know, they don't come, so, so that, I, I, regardless of whether that is seen as sufficient or not, that is the, the, the reality that we will be in for the foreseeable.
Sure.
To, to provide a little bit more perspective on that, for preliminary engineering, we requested over 150 million dollars. We received 75 million. So there's still a gap just in preliminary engineering of 56 million.
Sorry, of the 75, 19 is specifically for the rounded out, which is, which was on the slide. So it's even less than
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so less money. So even needing more money for permanent engineering, as we do our little math over here. But just to keep in mind that the whole project is somewhere, you know, four or five billion dollar project when you start talking about
It can only be done with that money. It can't happen without, it's too big.
As Jill Everett said, it needs to be a 60, 40 split or 70, 30. Has that ever been identified?
I, I, I think it'd be too early to try to identify what the exact ratio is. Um, I certainly think, you know, as we continue on in this process, we'll get more information on what, what that would look like.
So are we expected to look, you know, like completely shovel ready and, and, and have all our, all our design engineering portions, a certain complete, uh, percentage complete? Is that, I'm just trying to figure out, what does it take to, to, to get seen? What does it take?
They know yet, great. Cause the money isn't allocated at the federal level yet. They don't even
But I think you're right. If we fully designed it, knew what the true costs were, then we can have a conversation to figure out who's paying what, meaning the state versus Fed probably, right?
And I think an important distinction too is that it is seen, right? I mean, it's recognized as, as a significant issue in the region. But yes, I think more information as the engineering, preliminary engineering continues. Which as, you know, Brandon just brought up, is part of what we're looking at, the aging of the package itself of, you know, trying to ensure that it's earlier in the process rather than potentially later in a 16 year process.
Um, as, as we've mentioned a couple of times in your package, it's our draft legislative agenda. It's fairly robust. It's got, um, it's got these features on it. Let's just go ahead, let's go ahead and jump in first item. This is something I'm, I'm really excited because this is pretty close to where I live. So like, let's, let's just acknowledge some inherent bias here from staff here, but you have got a tremendous, a jewel of a resource, right? It's almost 140 acres. It's largely pristine. And, um, and there's an opportunity here, we think, to put a very good foot forward with your legislative delegation to ask for some assistance to provide, um, an ADA accessible park, or I'm sorry, ADA accessible pathway that would, that would, that would provide access to, to part of the park, including then like an all, like an inclusive playground structure as well. So as you can see, well, it's pretty small there, but hopefully in your packets, you can see there's, there's, um, it kind of, it would connect the shelter, picnic, restrooms as well. And so we estimate the cost of providing that ADA pad at around $500,000. Now, the full build out of phase one is in the neighborhood of 5 million. So, so there is a lot, we, when we talk about, as we mentioned before, is there skin in the game? Is the city already putting in quite a few resources? Yes. It's around $3 million of city money, and then we're looking at other grant opportunities and then we'll be looking for this piece from the state. I'm happy to go to the next one. If there's questions. Okay, great. Emergency Operations Center. You obviously spent a lot of time earlier today talking about this, the, the new police station. So, uh, I know you're up to speed on that. I won't belabor that. This piece is then, um, we think as, as part of that or additive, but what you're looking at is replacing your kind of ad hoc, not official, just in case there's an emergency. We've got about 300 square feet here. Now you use as an emergency operations center with an actual functional emergency operations center that would be around, it'd be just shy of 1500 square feet. It would meet some of the criteria that you would look for, for this kind of thing. It's, you could, it's, uh, it's able to be secured. It's, it's a, it's a location that you can secure in and out. Um, it'll be, it's, that would be accessible. And then best of all, and my man, not decimal, but as an adding, adding piece, it's envisioned as being like a community meetings, meeting space and resource for when it's not necessarily being used for either training top exercises or in the event of emergency. So it wouldn't just be sit there, um, not being accessed and being used as a resource when in events that's not an emergency. So this is a perfect, like one-third, one-third, one-third strategy. We've got about a million and a half dollar project. We're looking for about 500,000 from the state, 500,000 from the feds, and then, and then we would put up the balancing, the balance of 500, 500,000. So that's that project. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, again, this is a topic that is not new to you all. Um, I've certainly heard, um, I think I've heard some pretty clear direction on this. I, I think our legislative delegations know this as well and, and have it in their hearts as well, but just, it's important that it's there. We oppose this. This would be, this would significantly um, impact the quality of life for our residents and residents in the greater community.
I I hesitate to even start a conversation on the subject.
Okay.
Okay. But I will ask just a couple of simple questions. Um, so you know, it, it, the, the design of the goal was to meet this, this 27 million annual passengers goal. Right? We know that this location will only do seven of that. Uh, we know that the, the, each of the Pierce County locations will do 20 a piece of that. And then we don't even know what the pain-filled location would, would do because the, 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 the numbers haven't come out. And so it seems awkward that uh, we would still be on the list
Right.
when, when we don't know, uh, what, you know, an existing facility that already has, you know, uh, air pathways and, you know, flight lines, uh, would, would do. And then we also have those other two that, that would do 20 a piece. So we, we, it's hard to understand why we even exist on the list.
Deputy Mayor? Yeah. Uh, we got a little more information about that. Um, I haven't reported out on it because I just got it yesterday morning from, from Mark, um, from TRPC. Uh, he, you know, I'd asked that question about the, the, you know, we're, right now it only shows 7.8 million trips. They came back and said they think that number is very low. That is a number based off of today's um, numbers, what it would do at this, at this moment, but we've seen a lot of growth in this area. And it also was the assumption that that people would only travel, it's within a, a certain radius of where people would travel. And they believe more people would travel to this um, spot than, um, than what they're expecting. So um, all of, all of the peninsula and so on, so, so forth. They think you're, you'd be drawing a lot more people uh, than their original parameters. And so that was the information that came back when the question was asked by, um, from the Pierce County Plan Council.
All right. Thank you.
I think one more important thing, just to note on the commercial airport citing is, you know, on, on the draft agenda, um, you know, it's got the language on the, the opposition. One thing though, to just highlight is that the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Committee does not need to make a recommendation until June 15th, which would be after the session. Um, so just, you know, something to keep on the radar and keep in mind.
Thank you.
We've been really, we've been successful in receiving state funding on the capital side in order to procure a hotel and also make investments in a tiny village. And so what, um, what this item really is, is kind of continuation of what we've been talking about in prior legislation as well, about having the state really, um, provide leadership and, and support as we, as a community navigate through kind of the homeless housing crisis. And so as we do our part to provide these opportunities and locations, like looking forward longitudinally, how do we ensure that there's the operating support to support that capital investment? So we have a facility that's designed for, for temporary kind of emergency housing. Ideally, we see that transition then to like permanent supportive housing or longer term housing. That's, you know, adding kitchenettes and adding things, but more importantly, adding the connection to services. It, I, I wasn't sure if you're, okay?
Is the request that they create a stable source of operating funds, not just for Thurston County, but like a statewide, this isn't a Thurston County only need, right? A lot of cities are challenged with this.
Yeah, I don't believe a one-off special treatment for the City of Lacey. I would meet the criteria of stable. I would take it if it was offered. Um, but ideally the goal is to see this be like longitudinal, like a support to that.
Statewide operating funds.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vasquez, there is language that expressly states similar state projects across the state for that purpose of knowing that, you know, we want it
I'm also, I'm just advocating for us, but
Is that one of AWC's priorities as well or no? I, I, I don't believe that, um, I should have their priority document memorized. Yeah, she's got it. She's, she's got your coverage. She is the best. I would say that under their concept of providing behavioral health resources, it's strongly aligned. Whether or not they've articulated specifically a policy statement around permanent support housing, that's I think a little bit squishy, but for the most part philosophically, they're on the same thing.
Has the governor's office weighed in on that issue? With the, the budget?
With the the budget?
So, I mean, the 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 governor has been a participant in budgets that have um funded the rapid acquisition of housing, made significant investments in the Housing Trust Fund, and done a lot on the capital side. On the operating side, the governor signed in the new Apple Health and Homes um um supportive housing benefit, which targets individuals with serious mental illness. And that's starting to roll out. Um, but that does not address like the whole broad population. It's a good start. It's a good policy. It's something that is is um is is um helping people.
Good question.
It's a piece.
So, you know, the the Department of Commerce, you know, they 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 handed out these dollars. And, you know, we're we're very happy to be the recipients of these funds. Uh, but since that time, we've seen other people running to get shovel ready uh for 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 maybe, I won't say they're running to get shovel ready for handout. I'm just saying they're running to get shovel ready and they're they're. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, when they do become, you know, ready to do something, will there be dollars available for them? Or has this has this uh door closed?
For um acquisition of capital, the purpose of low income housing, the door has not closed. Um, in the report that I provided um uh earlier this week, I believe the number was that there's still eighty seven million in commerce that they're doing on like a revolving. So there's they're not, um, so i- if there are projects ready, there still is some grant money available this biennium. Believe it is a rev- revolving grant cycle at this point because they are trying to get the money out.
Could they be in the same county, same?
Sure.
Jason jurisdiction?
Sure, two bites of the apple if you want. Three, you're ready. Four, no, I'm not saying that. Yeah, but 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 there's not a limit on on him, a single jurisdiction, more than one grant application.
Got a project ready to go, Malcolm?
We've we've hit this about three or four different times, but specifically, um, as mentioned, um, we really do need to work very hard to ensure that the dollars are available when um when we are ready to go. So what we're um asking the legislative delegation is in this current biennium, so before the end of of July, or actually before the end of June of this year, uh, we believe the that we're ready to move forward on the young roundabout. So this is twenty one, twenty three, so that's nineteen million of that. And the ensuing biennium, which is then after July one, that's when the bulk of that engineering dollars, forty million dollars, forty million, we're asking them to age at that point, and then the balance is in the twenty five, twenty seven. So so that's what we hope to have our spending plan, which basically indicates that we're ready. I think that um, given the nature of this ask and why this ask was funded, it was funded on an emergent and emergency basis. I think we have a pretty compelling um um, we have a pretty compelling reason to have this prioritized. I think that conversation last year when we were talking about, is it just for the school or others? Maybe didn't cut the way we wanted it, but in this case, I think we go back to it and say, well, it is for this purpose. You knew it was for an emergency. That's why you put it in, Mr. Chair Fai. And I think that's a pretty compelling argument. So that's that's really, we are um, we're grateful that the money's in. It's not mission accomplished. It's still, you know, keep your keep your foot on the pedal. That's kind of the message.
So uh, just so I can get into perspective. So like, uh, just in front of JBLM, you know, for years, you know, it was the state saying, hey, to the Fed, hey, do you guys want to join together? So join forces, maybe we can widen this freeway, we can make more room for all these people, these forty thousand employees that you have coming to and from the base all the time. The answer was no, 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 no. And then all of a sudden, okay, let's do it. And it happened, which was good. They used the same, you know, uh, width of space to gain an extra lane uh and start a carpool lane. I don't, do you, do you, I don't know how much that pro- project costs. Do you remember, were you in any of?
So everything above Mounts Road, that was a four hundred ninety-five million dollar project.
Four ninety-five?
Yeah. Is that about right? Half billion?
They were able to absorb some shoulder, s- small up the center.
No, I don't feel, I don't know off the top of my head that it's not out of scope.
You can feel confident. He knows. That that was the big push to
He has a certain freedom.
To do something in front of my business board, and they changed access on uh the installation to to sure alleviate some of the traffic. And then ever since then, we've been worried about south of that. How do we then fix the other bottleneck? Four ninety-five?
That's just for that small piece of it.
Twenty dollars.
I believe that's what I remember the the big circles on the freeway that you guys remember that? Somebody put big circles on iPhone.
Yes.
At least stay two circles away from each other.
I caught it that.
Did you?
Yeah, that was awesome.
I my apology, we digress, sorry.
I'm here to serve you, so. I'm happy to. My kids got TV on, they're happy at plants, and it's all good. So, okay, back on the agenda here, item number six, addressing law enforcement vehicles. So um again, we we've already hit on this a couple of different times. There there was a bill last year that was largely agreed upon. I don't think it was necessarily considered perfect by any stakeholder group, but was largely agreed upon. It 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 passed the Senate, had some changes in the House, went out to that, went back to the Senate, and then on the last day, died in the Senate. So I do think that the what we're proposing here, which is the the cr- the crucial words are reasonable suspicion is the current statute is probable cause, which is a very high legal standard. I'm not a lawyer, but you employ some pretty good lawyers and some pretty good folks in your uh in your in your police office that can tell you the difference of that. There you go. I'm being jumped on by the outgoing two managers.
Wow, wow. Let's get that in the record.
So it, what we're what we're asking for is believed to be essential to allow for effective and safe pursuits of suspects when there's immediate threat to public safety. And that's what we're talking about, that immediate threat to public safety. Um, having the ability to make a choice in the moment about about pursuing that individual. So that's that's the piece there. Um, I there there definitely will be legislation introduced. I um I it will it will be in debate the entire session. And um again, I don't I don't like making predictions about what's going to pass or not, but I would I would say this has a good chance of passing this year. Okay, that is, um, if everyone's comfortable, that puts a pin up on our draft legislative agenda for twenty twenty-three. I'm seeing heads. Okay, great. And so I am. Please.
Has there been much discussion about the signals from OFM? The revenue forecast for the coming biennium is pretty poor. There's a lot of the things on our list are funding asks, and I'm sure we're not the only city coming to them with that. She anticipates a couple dozen million gain in the forecast for the coming year. And then the next biennium, we're looking at a multi hundred million dollar shortfall or reduction.
So the last two forecasts have have been um, depending on how you want to characterize the 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 one, the 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 most recent one was some like was a, you know, you're right, was a little bit higher in this biennium and and was was still looking a little bit negative. This was was down. The one before that was negative for both the current biennium revenue collections. And that's the first time we've had a downward adjustment since um the July of twenty twenty, which was I always like like the first COVID.
It's a scary one.
Yeah, the scary one, which was down nine billion, and then we've been we've been under revenue collection so far. Um, so I I mean, there's there is general pessimism about the economy. Um, what um, what I I would say is there's um, there still is a lot of federal money that has to flow out. Federal money, we could go, it gets washed and becomes sales tax and becomes. So it does create a little bit of a stabilizing force, and we have seen that for the last couple of years. The other piece is, um, there are also different pots of money that are restricted for certain things like the Climate Commitment Act. And we are now anticipating significantly more revenue in the Climate Commitment Act than originally predicted. And I can get really wonky here, but basically it was like the governor's fiscal note was twenty-four dollars a ton cost of compliance, which was going to create five hundred million in twenty twenty-five of revenue. The oil industry said, if you do Washington alone, it's going to be like fifty-eight dollars cost of compliance. So so people are like, well, okay. And they said, well, what if we link the Washington and California market? Well, that's gonna be about forty-four dollars cost of compliance. There's still some uncertainty about the veracity of the oil industry's numbers for various reasons, whether it causes fear about the impact on costs of the pump and things of that nature. But that being said, I feel fairly certain that it's when we look at what California, when they actually went go live, they were in like thirty-some dollars per ton. So I think it's fair to say we're going to get more. Uh, and so that means for those purposes, um, multimodal for electrification, things like that, for um, you know, like, like helping low-income folks transfer to heat pumps, things of that nature. I think there will be opportunities for that, for some of the traditional general puns done. Yeah, the watering hole might dry up a little bit. We might look at the other animal a little bit differently. Yeah, that happens, and that's usually the state looking at their responsibilities versus locals' responsibilities. Yeah, okay, so, thank you. So the legis- the draft legislative manual, okay, this is, there in any given legislative session, there's about two thousand bills. And, you know, I'm there looking at a lot of them and and doing a lot of triaging and trying to figure out like, okay, how how do I sort this? How do I figure this out? Where do I think the city would be on this issue? Now, not all of those are germane to local government. And um but the purpose of this then is kind of to establish some broad principles, some guiding principles, so that I and 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 your staff, as your representatives, can can engage in the legislative process at the speed in which the legislative process is moving and make like a effective and insightful kind of engagement. So that's really what we're talking about, because the old days of like, like, okay, it's it's, you know, the issues are getting more and more complicated. They're getting more nuanced. And as and as things are getting more and more fluidly divided too, that's a harder thing for us to navigate. So so that's really what we're kind of looking for is some broad principles in which we can operate within that legislative environment. Things that are that we think are going to come up, that's when we talk about, like, here's the things we think are going to come up. What are your opinions on some of the things, your thoughts and opinions about things that we think are going to come up? And so to illustrate that, like, how it works.
And I might just jump in here for a second and just say, you know, things that might come up. Obviously, we don't know, you know, we're not divinations, we can't, you know, forecast exactly what's going to come up. But the idea with this is that this is a starting point and that we will continue to develop this after every session. When we do see, you know, certain bills that are coming up and maybe coming up over time, and that way we can adjust and make, you know, draft statements for for your review, the seat that should be included in, you know, next edition of the manual. So it's it's helpful to have the blueprint. It's a living document and something that will continually be adjusted over time based on, you know, what activity we're seeing at the state level.
I'm just, I'm I'm still, I I I think we are heuristic here and have like value. I just love divination as a as a word as vernacular. Um, do you want to jump on this one?
Sure, and I think this, I'll I'll say this goes really well with the conversation on the two-stroke engine and practical solutions that we're having before we started this. So one of the things that we've included here in um the manual is uh something on climate resources and tools and really talking about how, you know, we've got the Climate Mitigation Plan, and that's a really good uh tool to have. Um, so the city would support the creation of sustainable state programs using unallocated Climate Commitment Act funds, which Brian just went over about that surplus, specifically, and and other state resources as well, to fund local climate capital projects that enhance community resiliency and potentially leveraging these types of dollars with funding that might be available at the federal level uh with the uh Inflation Act, for example. The city also supports the state working with local governments for future climate initiatives in the transition to green alternatives uh alternates. And so this again would be the idea that, you know, as conversations come up about two-stroke engines, to make sure that those types of programs are realistic and are feasible for, you know, jurisdictions like ours to eventually implement and have our ability to, you know, weigh in on certain policies at the state level. So asking, you know, kind of broad level.
Of them giving us more unfunded mandates?
Yeah.
Correct.
What they're gonna do on that one?
Which is another thing that's included in the manual. It's it talks specifically about, you know, unfunded mandates and that being an issue for local governments.
Yeah, it's funny, that guess, unfunded mandates is specifically addressed in the manual as well.
Good, yeah.
Um, annexations is another example. I mean, just the, just some, the the principles in the draft manual establish that um looking at how to kind of make annexations easier, whether that's financial incentives or other tools. Uh, obviously, the legislation that we were able to pass a couple of years ago that creates an alternative pathway for islands as examples of things of that nature that we would, you know, support. And then lastly, Parks and Rec, and this gets to, Councilmember, this gets to your point about like, i- is it possible? Um, ideally, I would be talking about this in the context of um opportunities to enhance funding for these types of things. But conversely, in the environment that we might see coming up in this biennium, like, what do we do to preserve these types of funding opportunities? And how do we ensure that these grant programs continue to exist in a way that is beneficial to our communities? So those are, that's broadly um we're looking at. If there's any questions, we're happy to entertain them now um about its purpose and scope or things of that nature.
Are you waiting for an in-person session? Or?
Yes. No, I I I I I have to buy new suits.
Yeah, I know.
I've waited three years. My suits don't fit anymore. You can guess which way I went.
I think all of us went that way.
But yes, I'm actually gonna have to scramble to find some time to get some uh a new suit or two. So yes, it will be in person unless something drastic changes.
How do you see, do you see any benefit or or the other other side of that? Um, to Lacey now having three legislative districts in the city limits? You know, in the past, we were in the twenty-second completely. The second had some urban growth area, but didn't have any of the city limits. With our more recent annexation, we actually have, the second is in the city limits, and so is the thirty-fifth. In fact, I live in the thirty-fifth now with the changes. Do you see that as a benefit to us at all, having more representation there?
Yeah, I do, right? And I mean, it will take work for some of them to feel like.
Lacey's theirs.
Lacey's theirs.
And secondary does. I mean, Andrew certainly does.
The second is fantastic.
And I know the people in the thirty-fifth pretty well. We'll have, we can get them.
I I think, I think easily on like the capital budget required. Like historically, we approached the entire delegation, right? But at the end of the day, when the project is in the twenty-second, it's difficult to expect the second to rally around that project. Conversely, now, we might have a situation where we might have an attractive, we might have three attractive projects in three districts. You know, and I I I mean, that's just a really simple example, that it does extend to the policy and the amount of like, can we form a wedge? And does it, is it bipartisan? Does it have more effect of like that one? The those are more nuanced and a little bit more difficult to see how they play out, but they could play out. Whereas the capital budget one is a pretty easy example of like, we might have more opportunities because instead of asking, you know, we're asking this delegation for this, this delegation for this, and this delegation for this. Perhaps that's a strategy we could consider.
I assume when we do our our meeting with our delegation, we'll invite all three.
Right now? Yeah, we were um, we were aiming for the first, we're finding um scheduling our delegation um a little bit of difficulty, but we are working on it diligently. So um that's why it says TBD. Um, we're trying to find time that works for you all as well as them, and and that's that's now nine. That's, you know, we're in the, we're sixteen busy people, kind of, kind of, you know, like, the the schedule is 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 difficult. Um, but we we will get something, we assure you. Um, and then first day session, uh, action day is last day session. So um winters come, winters go, so there'll be swallows.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Well, I I do admit would make a comment, though. This is probably the most comprehensive, I would say, legislative agenda, both at federal and state level. Chan has a a lot of uh fingerprints on this, so this is a well-represented for the city's interests. So the manual's a nice touch that broadens kind of base and provides a little more lift. So that's a really big deal for really our legislative uh process, so just wanted to make that.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah. Yep, thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, Shannon is a pro.
Okay, well then let's go on to our last agenda, I am, which is the right way initiative and hotel acquisition briefing.
Thank you.
Yeah, really. Four nine five.
Do we get a handouts from you too? He just wants you to give us more often.
Well, good evening, council, and uh, now we're closing out the interwork session with one last topic. And it's the uh, an update or briefing on the status of the state's right-of-way initiative. As we know, this is that initiative that the state took on from the uh, position of the governor's office to start looking at uh, uh. Removing encampments that are located in the high five rightsway and finding shelter for those individuals in the, in the local communities, working with the local communities. And as you know, I talked about the legislative updates, you kind of made reference to it. It is a, a, an issue that is not only in Thurston County, but also in Pierce County, King County. And Spokane County, uh, as well. And so there's, it's a priority for the state statewide. You recall, uh, this uh, project first started coming forward. Uh, it started out with a MOU between uh, the state, uh, Washington State Department of Commerce, uh, Washington State Patrol. Washington State Department of Transportation, as well as Thurston County, Olympia, Tomater, and Lacey. And that was called the right-of-ways initiative MOU. This was an MOU to kind of say, this is what the objectives are. Uh, again, to try to uh, create uh, uh, resources to provide uh, shelter for those individuals and that are in the uh, right away. And then through that process, those uh, the infrastructure or that uh, those shelters would become regional assets. Also coming with that, an MOU was a commitment from the state to bring resources. In this case, uh, applying thirty million, thirty-seven million dollars to the Thurston region for projects that could help with this effort. Uh, council, uh, approved and authorized the city manager to sign that as, that MOU back in July, July seventh. And, and as part of that was, again, it was a broad scope. With reference that additional MOUs would be created for project-specific uh, actions. And as projects became more identified or more realistic. So now, this is what I'm gonna update you on is, is uh, that MOU or that project from Lacey has come forward to the point where we're gonna have to bring the MOU. To council at your December first uh, council meeting for uh, uh, formal review and, and request action. Uh, to uh, authorize the city manager to sign that MOU. So this MOU is gonna be related to the acquisition of the hotel at eighty-two hundred Quinol Drive Northeast. This is a currently known as the Days Inn Hotel. It's about a hundred and twenty-four uh, room hotel with, on about two-point-two acres. And the idea would be for, to acquire that hotel and convert it to a enhanced shelter. Uh, facility that would ultimately be converted to permanent supportive housing. So this MOU that's coming forward, and, and again, it just really came to fruition earlier this week. Uh, with the county and, 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 um. And Lacey staff working with commerce staff to kind of get the framework of agreements to bring forward. Um, really going to spill out how this process is going to work. Uh, some of the key actions, commitments that are being in this MOU is the, uh, again, the commitment from the Department of Commerce to contract with the local. Uh, it's uh, low-income housing institute, known as Lehigh, to acquire the hotel property. And uh, provide, and the commerce will provide fifty million dollars for that acquisition. And then an additional five million dollars for Lehigh to start rehabbing and remodeling that facility into. Uh, approximately a hundred bit, a hundred unit enhanced shelter or a hundred beds.
De- define an enhanced shelter.
Well, enhanced shelter, there's, there's a, a couple of models out there, but it's a, a shelter that uh. It's not just, it's, it's not a drop-in shelter. It's, so they're gonna be, individuals are gonna be placed in the, into the unit. It's gonna be set up with uh. Site and perimeter security. There will be rules of conduct that individuals placed there will need to, um. Uh, abide by or risk being, um, exited out of the facility. It's uh, clearly the goal is a uh, around a six-month stage as a transition to get into, um. Permanent supportive housing or other long-term housing needs. Uh, again, I'd say the goal because we can't mandate a, a exiting based off of uh. Um, of just leaving the facility. And then also it's a place where you can have wraparound services being provided primarily through what's called case management. And case management is not necessarily telling somebody, making them go into a, uh, either mental health services or drug and addiction service. But it's having that constant contact with them to develop that relationship and offering those services on a frequent basis.
Is this similar to the place that we went and, and I guess that was Tacoma?
And this is what the framework we've been working with, uh, with our, you know, county partners as well as Lehigh to frame that type of model. And replicate the absent court model.
Thank you.
Yes. So as this uh, MOU, we'll pick other key aspects of it. Um, again, this uh, the MOU will be incorporated into the specific contracts with Lehigh. Cause Lehigh's not a party of this particular MOU, but some of the framework we want in here, we want to transfer over to, uh, the, the contract with Lehigh. Um, also part of this is the uh, uh, the Department of Commerce will also provide two years of, um. Operating dollars to support the uh, the functions and, and operations for Lehigh. That will be. Uh, a pass-through funding that will actually come through Thurston County and Thurston County will specifically contract with Lehigh.
And. Are they keeping their administrative costs on that ten percent like they usually do?
That would probably be the case. It'd be the typical funding stream. But one of the things we want to be uh, assured of, and this is what the MOU articulates, is that, uh, the, um, um. The contract with the I for operations will be under state guidelines and also would uh, include coordination with Lacey. To ensure successful implementation and operation, uh, to the operations of the contract. Then also, we put another particular provision there too, that through this process, we'll establish a operations council. And this is something different than Aspen Court, but additional. What the operations council would be is basically. Uh, be the, uh, representatives of Thurston County, the city of Lacey, Department of Commerce and Lehigh. Do meet on a monthly basis to uh, track progress of the facility, monitor activity and take any particular corrector act activities that may be occurring. And also to continue that conversation about the future improvements of the facility. Uh, and that gets into that permanent supportive housing. Again, the other thing the MOU will address too is who is placed there and the priority. That's gonna be based on weighted priority. Since the state is bringing all the financial resources to do that, of course, the first priority is their objective is to address those individuals in the Thurston County. Interstate five right away area. Uh, second priority will be, um. The, uh, individuals that are, uh, going, working through or going through the local coordinate entry system and placement. Uh, third priority will be, uh, uh, single adults living in the uh, city of Lacey or Thurston County. It's placed from, uh, an unsheltered encampment. That are not on that coordinate entry list. And that's an important clause because that means if we're interacting with individuals and there's capacity there. We can have some direct referrals through our CRU and mod activities or other activities in county and county residents. And I take that back. First priority is actually, there are several, at, at this hill location currently, there are several individuals there that are placed there. Off of uh, uh, vouchers and hand funds placed by local not, uh, service providers. We want to ensure that those individuals are not displaced, that they will also be, uh. As the hotels acquired and renovated, that they will have, that will remain in that location as well.
So they're already in there right now?
They're already in there right now.
Do we know how many of those are?
I've heard, uh, estimates of between twelve and twenty-five, and we're gonna be meeting next week with our, uh. Uh, jurisdictional partners to kind of get a stronger assessment. And to also work with Lehigh and the current, the existing owner of the hotel to make sure that they're not being displaced before we can go through this process.
So it could be as much as a quarter of the beds, like, cause we're looking at about a hundred beds and it could be as many as twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we could be already a quarter full before we start.
But right now, they're there without the, the type of management and supervision. And this would create a better situation if they get displaced, then they're out in the streets and we're.
Totally agree. No argument there.
Um, and then of course, uh, the, so I mentioned that, you know, people live in their first priority. People live in the state's right-of-way, second priority, coordinate entries, the third. The individuals that are, you know, being, uh, removed from unsheltered encampments are four priority. And then fifth, with the permission of Thurston County, uh, other agreed-upon populations within Thurston County when space is available. And the final provision is, this is one of the important ones too. Um, if the property is operating at less than seventy-five percent capacity and there are, uh, sufficient, uh, there are people in those top five priorities. Then based on approval by Thurston County, and of course, you'd be part of that process, you could place other individuals from other locations. Uh, into that facility. And that was important to the state. And we were concerned too about, you know, we want to make sure there's controls. If this becomes an asset for, for our local communities. And it wouldn't have, uh, people from other parts of the state or within other, uh, areas that Lehigh serves being placed in this facility. But also too, if it's not operated at full capacity and there's room, then there should be a process that you had to accommodate that on a case-by-case basis and by local. So that provision.
Can't imagine it ever not being.
Yep. Yes, I would agree. But if it's not, then we're being successful and that's what we want to achieve.
That'd be really great success if we can't keep it whole.
So the other key theme of this MOU that's gonna come forward is also that future, uh, transition to permanent supportive housing. And what that transition would look like is it would have to go through a competitive process for funding. Uh, and so what, uh, what we're putting in the MOU, and this is stuff that carries forward to the Lehigh contract, is that Lehigh. Um, uh, in the contract behind Department of Commerce, it would be required for Lehigh to continue to seek funding for that conversion. And the conversion is expected to occur within two and five years. Um, and then, um, and then of course, uh. Um, they'll continue, if they don't get funded with that two to five years, they'll continue to make that good faith effort. And, um, um. And also too, there's, there's current, uh, there's a sell tower on this property with a lease that applies to it. Part of the agreement says that any revenue from that, uh, that, uh, any of those leases would have to go back into the property. It can't just be used for something else. And then.
Into the property or to the program?
Into the property and the program, whichever is it works. But it goes to be, general maintenance activities are gonna be needed. And so if there's a, a lease, lease or subleases on that property, those funds should go back to help with maintenance and cost of the overall property. Um, and then finally, the regional housing council will make good effort to identify and prioritize local resources and matches needed. Uh, in the application for funding to the transition for permanent supportive housing. Cause a lot of these annual funding programs that come through the state housing trust fund. Or recap dollars, there's local leverages that are necessary to be competitive in that process. So going back to some of your conversation and legislative agenda and why it's important to have the state, you know, look at continual funding for this right-of-ways initiative. Cause the operation dollars right now is committed for two years. And there's expectation that, you know, through the normal notice of funding applica- uh, funding availability every year, that we'd be re- that we could reapply. But there should be some priority setting for these facilities that are already in operation and continue that funding source. So that's one of the things that, where the legislative agenda also coincides with our efforts. And that should be not only for Thurston County, but for the entire right-of-ways initiative is they start putting this capital assets in here and fund them. After that two years, that prioritization for continual funding for those operations would be important. Correct, correct. And then also too, then when we start having these local dollars, then we take those local dollars away from providing other additional resources. Or other parts of that infrastructure and, and system that we need to have that stepping stone for people to eventually graduate out of, uh, their current condition. So that's a quick overview of the MOU. Um, are there any other questions in particular to that effort? Uh, but again, this will come before the council on December first. Um, and, uh, and you're just, and you're, and they'll be included in the packet. So you have an opportunity to, to look at the actual MOU and ask questions at that meeting before taking any action. So knowing that this was all coming together and, uh, now we can hand out. Uh, what I've handed out is a flyer about the upcoming, uh, public information forum that, um. That will be holding next Wednesday, the sixteenth. And, uh, so I want to kind of just give the council a quick, uh, um. Briefed an opportunity to ask questions about this upcoming forum. The, um. So we wanted to make sure we're being proactive with, and, and with the public information and engagement. Make sure that people are aware that this is coming. And we're trying to time it to with acquisition as well as the development of this MOU. And making sure we have all the provisions there. And knowing that this MOU was getting close, we decided to go ahead and issue a press release. That went out last Tuesday. We also, um, again, did a drop by handouts to. Uh, adjacent businesses and, and property owners and immediate adjacent to the hotel location. And then, um. And, um, as I, you saw, the Olympian picked that up and ran that article also on Tuesday. In addition, of course, the county commissioners were briefed on this as well as the regional housing council. And again, the whole purpose is, is trying to get, as this is coming forward, um. Uh, information out there so people can get accurate information and then also have the ability to ask questions. Oh, one thing I want to mention to you and acknowledge is that, uh, Scott is, you know. Several months ago called key, uh, properties out there to make sure they're aware that this was coming to you. So we've done a lot of groundwork to make sure that there, there would be, uh. Um, some understanding of what's coming.
So in addition to dropping off at the individual businesses, you've reached out to the property owners, do that? Cause they're typically not, you know, onsite, obviously.
Yeah, we, especially the media adjacent to property owners and businesses. We made, uh, phone calls, uh.
We specifically reached out to them. There's a lot of franchise owners out there, so it's difficult. You're, then you go call California. It's not, it's a little bit more difficult for some of those businesses.
Which, which is why we had to actually, uh, recognize, uh, Leslie, you know, he actually went and handed out flyers to the business and he had interaction. So you may have a franchise owner over corporate location, but you actually have the employee or the manager of the facility too. So they were getting that information as well. And all announcing this upcoming, uh, um, forum. And with the forum, uh, we decided to, uh, set up two time slots for the forum on, on Wednesday. One at three P M. and one at six P M. Whole purpose of that is to try to get as broad, uh, make it two different times in case, uh, people had conflicts. The other piece of the forum is that it will be, uh, uh, have a, a hybrid component to it in a webinar format. So anybody that would view the forum online would not, that be able to participate, but they can view the, 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 the open house. And then also can, people can watch it on later date as well. So with the kind of general sense of the, um, um, the form or the format we're using is, of course, we'll have a welcome. They'll start off with a welcome to whoever's, you know, in attendance, write an overview of the agenda. And then a kind of a general overview of the project and partnership and why we're here. And then actually we'll have a representative of Lehigh, uh, go into a formal presentation of going over who they are. Um, you know, what successes they had in other locations, what services they offer, the referral process, the total contact, going over what, what that is. Uh, the expected timelines and also too, um, that they have a model. And which one thing we're gonna ask that's be a requirement of the contract is that they establish that a community advisory group. And what the community advisory group really is, is they will have a, uh, a group that will be formed, uh, consist of adjacent property owners or businesses. Community members at large, uh, service providers, be Lacey representation or county representation. That would meet on a monthly basis, at least starting now. And it'd be an opportunity to kind of get to know more about what they're doing, what issues are occurring. Um, asking questions and be able to resolve things quickly. And it'd be a kind of communication that the surrounding. Uh, property owner and business can use to be able to have, hey, we got this issue. Is this from this? Or to get better understanding. And want to make sure that it's kind of the good, good neighbor, good neighbor concept that, uh, uh, they're trying to establish. And then of course, all the contact information they have. We'll follow that with a, a question and answer periods. And, uh, and with that, in addition to Lehigh, we'll have a, a panel there. Uh, the panel will consist of, uh. Scott Spence will be one of the panelists, uh, also Tom Webster and Kitty Marino from Thurston County. And, uh, we should have, uh, Nathan Peppin there from the Department of Commerce. And we may have also a representative from the governor's office and the policy advisory for housing and homeless too. Uh, but that's still to be confirmed. And of course, we have all the support staff in there for any of those specific, uh, questions. We'll have, uh.
I would highly recommend that you have police presence for the, cause people are gonna have questions about law enforcement.
Good, good idea. We will, um, uh, Deputy Chief Hollis will be there. You actually talked about the CRU program, how they're going to be developing that relationship with Lehigh and, and provide support. And then too, what surrounding property owners should do when they see activity. And a lot of people don't realize you just called, called the, you know, police department. Our police department responds quite quickly. Um, so again, that's a quick overview of the forum. Um, kind of what we've done for getting the word out again is, is, uh, we did some postcard distribution. We did the press release. Uh, we've had held a pre-planning meeting with the, the participants. We've had held a pre planning meeting with the participants, and we'll have website updates and social media outlet, too, as well as getting the word out as best we can. Anything else that I like up here? Also want to thank Shannon and John for pulling this all together, the graphics, the information materials and logistics of it. It's kind of difficult when you don't know exactly when something's going to happen, and so you're trying to anticipate and and had a strategy in place, and so we were able to pull it all together in the last couple of weeks, and it's, I think it'll be a good event as we can get.
Just mentioned.
So Rick.
Just just one addition to it, so there's going to be three to six in person at the council chambers. You can view it on YouTube if you cannot attend, it's not interactive, but at least you can watch it.
It's live.
It it is live, and then if later, if you couldn't be there on that specific day, you can watch it a later date, so there's that opportunity for the public.
So I'm just curious a little bit. If, since we're not involved in this transaction at all, obviously, it's the state is purchasing the hotel using right the right away money. What triggered the MOU? And what would happen, say, if we refused to sign the MOU, for example?
Well, when the right away initiative first came out and kind of a little bit of history, was we were first going to be allotted about nineteen million dollars for the Thurston County region. And with that, we would not be able to, with all the various projects, because there's also, part of this right away dollars is also going to establish a fifty, approximately fifty unit tiny home village on Franzen Anderson Road, a property Olympia owns, and so those funds were being kind of split up a bunch, a couple of different projects. So there wouldn't have been enough money, that total of nineteen million dollars, to acquire the property and rehabilitate it, so that was where the Lacy and the council was at with, you know, funding that we had, the county was out to add that funding, and so we're going to have that local match. And so that was what started the conversation of of the MOU. And also, though, we wanted to make sure that we had some control and establishing, you know, how it's operated and controlled in the site. Now, the one county that I didn't mention that was part of the right away initiative was Snohomish County. And when they, when the state said we had X number of dollars, and this is how it's proportioned out per the counties, Snohomish didn't have any product projects, and since we had a good, strong regional conversations, we had these projects identified, we were able to get that excess dollar up to thirty seven million, which fully brought up the hotel. And we still wanted to be involved and have a say and have the coordination in how the how the facility is is operated, having that say that we're going to be the primary response to anything, any issues that arise or cause from the surrounding community and the public, so we just wanted to have that be at the table and be part of that coordination. But you're right, because of the the funding allocation the state did bring to Thurston County, we aren't a direct funding partner in this, but we are a, I guess, a a community partner in the portal operation.
So what happens?
Well, if we don't sign it, then
We don't ever see that.
The provisions that we would want in the MOU may not be in there.
I think that's the the primary issue, then what voice do we have to make sure operations are going to meet the needs for our, because it is located in our community? So if we fail to be at the table, to Councilman Greenstein's point, then what?
And and then also, too, if there are issues and our our community has concerns, they're still going to come to us and say, what's this going on, and we would not have a a way to have a voice at the table in that monthly meetings.
Have to be at the table.
Yeah. So I I absolutely agree, I was just trying to figure out what was the difference between where we at before, when I know we were at the table, because we had a local match, and where we're at now, where we we don't have a local match. And, you know, how did that change the MOU at all, and but it sounds like it hasn't changed it at all, where it's still very similar.
Yeah, we don't have So we don't have a direct contract, either in the acquisition or in the in the management, but we have a voice and we have a presence at the table.
It maybe the one distinction there is that we're not the owner of the facility, what the state is, and that is one issue, but I would argue that's probably a benefit not to be the owner of the facility.
Actually, Lehigh will be the owner of the facility, and the state would put on a restrict, deed restriction that the facility has to use, be used in this manner for for this purpose for, I think, a forty year period.
Okay. Just get this. Okay. So so when will that MOU come before us?
A public forum will be on Wednesday, the sixteenth, next Wednesday. And then the MOU will come for council on your December first meeting.
Okay, I I do know that there's, obviously, when when people get their information, you know, secondhand or, you know, through the media, they they obviously don't get the full picture, and I've already received several emails from constituents to think this is going to be something completely different than it's going to be. And so I I do appreciate that we're going to have some open houses. I don't know if that's going to reach everyone we would like it to reach. And so I do think we need to have a concerted effort of getting a fax page about this, something that we can push out on our social media, that's something prominent on our our website, and that we're doing everything we can to make sure that the the right information gets out to the public on this. Because, you know.
Yeah, and we do have a website webpage set up, and we have refer links that refer back to that webpage. And this flyer, unfortunately, I didn't send it out in advance to me to you, but I'll send it out to you and Councilman Cox, that this this flyer about the meeting, it talks about what is a enhanced shelter, what will include, kind of the general plan and background, and on the back page is the frequently asked questions, which is pretty, you know, probably gets to a lot of those concerns that we anticipate people having. And then, of course, it's going to continue referring people to those webpages and this information. And the other thing, too, is, you know, common, you know, common thought is, all of a sudden, you're going to increase, I guess, the presence of people hanging out and loitering, but this isn't a day shelter or a like a food bank or something like that, where people come in and go in all the time. This is a situation where there will be people placed there specifically, there will be onsite management and site controls, there'll be perimeter fencing. There will be permits for parking for residents of the facility, and then there are also, there's a lobby that controls who's coming and going as well.
And so Lehigh does in Tacoma, I got to say, from my visit there, I was pretty impressed. You know, and you know, I've been a pretty I've been an opponent to a lot of this stuff, but in that, the way that operation, if this is going to be like that, I thought they did a really good job. They had a good set of rules, they enforced them, it was clean, there weren't people hanging out, it wasn't anything like that, that people are probably afraid it's going to be. And and I think the point you mentioned earlier, when you and I spoke, Scott, I think really needs to be made clear to, you know, at that public meeting about the amount of police calls currently going to that hotel, I forget what you said, but it was a huge number, I mean, compared to other hotels, it was like three or four times as many.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be understood, because I think police calls and police activity there will probably go down rather than up with this facility.
And and that's a, that'll be part of the overview presentation, it'll be one of the first slides, it's talking about the existing conditions and and the difference between existing and the proposed.
And those are what we talked about, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but you have about four hundred plus calls per year to that site, and a comparable hotel in that area is about sixty to seventy.
Wow.
I can tell you that currently, that location is one of our largest call generators for the city. It's definitely one of our hotspots, it's it's hoped by the police department, this new new approved use will actually in increase public safety in that area.
You know, you were on the same tour that I was on, and I mean, that was pretty impressive what they were doing there, I thought.
No, I greatly believe in this, in the Aspen model, I'm glad we're bringing it here to Lacey. I'm very much against the warehousing of homeless people, it's homeless, it's providing housing in cooperation with services is what works, it's a proven model, it works repeatedly, I'm glad we're bringing it here to Lacey.
Thank you.
Great. Well, with that, do you have any other questions for for Rick?
Andy, just for you, though, real quick, because you and I talked about it earlier, what we talked about with the depot?
Yep.
Already taken care of, that is handled already, in case you didn't know.
That's that's good news, I know Scott and I were just talking about that before I left, so I appreciate that we moved quickly on that. Okay, well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. Good seeing you. Bye.
Thanks.